Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the February 24th, 2016 Merrimack Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting. And Patrick, would you do the pledge, please?
If you'd all rise, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I swear my... After the preamble.
Yeah. Rich, would you read the preamble, please?
Absolutely. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will de... I'm sorry. We will proceed with the petitions in the order they are listed on the agenda unless the board deems it appropriate to take a petition out of order. State law and local ordinances set out the criteria that must be met in order for the board to grant a request. The minimum requirements are outlined on the form provided by the Community Development Office, and the petitioner should proceed with this format to provide adequate justification for the board to grant the request. The chair will then open the meeting to hear the testimony either for or against the request. All discussion will be between the speaker and the board. Please be respectful of all, and in the interest of time refrain from repeating previous testimony. No new documentation will be accepted by the board for consideration this evening, but the board reserves the right to ask for additional testimony at any time. After the hearing, the facts from all parties regarding the petition and the chairman will close the public hearing, and the board will deliberate and vote on the request before moving on to the next petition. Please turn off all cell phones and pagers.
All right. And Patrick, would you swear the petition is... They're going to testify tonight, please.
Anybody who's going to be speaking tonight on any of the petitions, please stand, raise your left hand.
What?
Right hand, sorry, right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth so help you God. Thank you. Please remember when you come... Your name is called, or you come up, make sure that you sign in before speaking, and that the green light is lit on the microphones. Thank you. Adam, sure?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I would like to, first of all, I'd like to take number six on the agenda, the Meridian Land Services and Northview Homes and Development, and move it to the last item for tonight. I'd like to move this along as quickly as we can since the weather is not that good outside tonight, and I believe we can move the others right along. So the first item is Philip Worcester, petitioner-owner, requesting a variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a 22-by-24 two-car garage 12 feet from the front property line whereas 30 feet is required. The parcel is located at 8 Freedom Street in the residential district, tax map 5C, lot 471, in our case number 2016-06. Who's going to be testifying in this, please?
I'm here, Philip Worcester. I'm a wife...
All right. Just to let you know...
I was going to take the lead of the room.
Okay. Just for note that Lenny Worcester is recusing himself from this item. There are only three members on the board. You can either request to move it to next month, or you can... The three of us can hear it. It has to be at least a two-to-one margin on the voting. What would you like to do?
I just want to take the lead.
All right. That's fine. That's good. Thank you.
Will you just take a seat and sweep around your mic?
Okay. Now, your mic has to have a bright green light, not just green, but bright green on there.
So do you just go right into the question?
Okay. Would like to do maybe a hundred-word or less, just reference to what you want, and then you can go right into the points of law on it.
Okay. Like I said, I'm Philip Worcester. This is my wife, Kristen. We're here with our two daughters, Megan and Bridgette. We'd like to build a two-car garage to the side of our home and relocate our driveway on 8 Freedom Street. We've had some recent, I guess, frustration with the town blocking off our road with a gate. We can't access our house anymore from the road we live on, and we need the extra space because I have a daughter that drives now, the other one will be driving soon, and we just don't have any room to park anymore. And we'd like to have the garage for storage and to be able to get our cars out of the weather. I guess that's about it.
Okay. Now, what do you mean that your driveway is blocked off?
Well, our house is considered a corner lot, which I don't see it being a corner lot when the two roads don't connect, and the town... The town put a gate across the end of them, so we really can't access our driveway from the road we actually technically live on.
Do you know why they did that?
They said originally the roads were never supposed to connect. It was just kind of a cut-through, and people just cut through there over the years. There's like 25 feet of dirt between the two roads. They don't actually connect to one another. And the road... Worcester Road, which is to the side of our home, is only like a Class 6 road, I think they... Jeff Strong told me. It's only 20 feet wide or so, and it's paved most of it, but it is technically a dead end. And they installed a gate to stop the traffic from flowing through between the two roads.
Now, how long ago was this?
The gate was installed about two years ago, I'd say. And ever since, it's kind of caused a little bit of frustration for us. Most people coming to visit our home can't seem to figure out how to pull into our driveway. It kind of seems like we're being unfairly classified as a corner lot here where you can't drive between the two roads.
Gillian, can you add anything further to this?
I believe it was the position of the fire department that had something to do with emergency access and safety, which is why they gated off the road. They don't have details in the memo that they sent to us, but that's all I know of that issue.
Yeah, I think that would be good to reference, just because that seems kind of contradictory right there.
I'm wondering if it'd be worthwhile if we tabled this to next month and contact the fire department and get further information.
I mean, I'm not sure if that actually changes. There... I'm still looking for a variance to go 12 feet from the property line. And I'm not really 100% sure if relocating the driveway actually requires...
Yeah. I mean, in either case, the variance would be needed whether that was gated off or not, so I'm not sure that it changed it either.
All right. Why don't you go ahead with the points of law on that, and I'm going to make notes, see if we can get some more information from the fire department on this.
So I read the question first?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And then stop after every number, so if we have any questions, we can ask you.
Okay. "Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. Granting a variance to allow us to build a two-car garage and to relocate the driveway at 8 Freedom Street would not pose any threat to public safety, health, or welfare. The building of an attached 22-foot-by-24-foot garage will allow for our vehicles to be parked indoors out of the weather and off the street. Therefore, if there is any effect to public safety, it would be a positive to have the vehicles off the street. The location of the garage and driveway will have no negative effect on traffic flow, nor will there be any change to the character of the neighborhood. The garage will only encroach on a town-owned, dead-end street, and since we are the last house on the street, there is no traffic flow past our home."
Any questions? Go ahead.
Okay. "The spirit of the ordinance is observed because..." "The spirit of the ordinance is observed in that the property is owned residential, and the construction of a two-car attached garage for personal use by our family would be considered appropriate. The proposed garage would be located to the left side of the existing house at 8 Freedom Street, and therefore will only encroach into the setback along a town-owned, dead-end road known as Worcester Avenue. For this reason, the encroachment would not have any adverse effects on abutting properties, nor will it give any impression of overcrowding. Ample open space will still exist between all neighboring houses, and there will be no impact to any of our neighbors' outdoor space."
Any questions? Go ahead.
Okay. "Granting the variance would do substantial justice because..." "Granting the variance would do substantial justice because it is the only feasible way to alleviate our current predicament. My husband and I have lived in Merrimack all our lives, and along with our two teenage daughters have made 8 Freedom Street our home for the last 14 years. We have one daughter now driving with her own car, and the other one is soon to start driver's education in the spring. This has created a driveway and parking situation where we just don't have enough room to safely park off the street. Another difficult situation that we have is that even though our property has frontage on both Freedom Street and Worcester Avenue, we no longer have access between these two streets. The recent installation of a gate at the end of Worcester Avenue has blocked the access to our driveway from our legal address of 8 Freedom Street. This has caused a confusing situation for anyone visiting our home, and there is a concern that this could pose a problem for emergency personnel who may be called to the 911 address of 8 Freedom Street. Granting the variance would allow us to solve both of these problems in a reasonable and adequate way so that our family could continue to live happily in the neighborhood."
Questions? Go ahead.
Okay. "For the following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished..." "For the following reasons, the value of the surrounding properties will not be diminished because the proposed two-car garage will be tastefully built to match the existing house and will look aesthetically pleasing as a residential structure. The relocating of the driveway and the building of a garage is an upgrade to our property, and if anything should help increase the value of surrounding homes. The location of the proposed new garage will be attached to the side of the existing house and will only encroach onto a dead-end road. There will be no effect to the privacy of adjacent properties, nor will it cause a conflict with the use of any adjacent properties. The traffic flow to and from our home will be shifted to Freedom Street, and that should be a positive for the properties on Worcester Avenue, which is a small, dead-end street not built up to today's standards. The Town of Merrimack Highway Department has said that they are in favor of lessening the amount of traffic on Worcester Avenue and that they have no problems with a garage or driveway."
Questions? Rich?
I'll save them for the end.
Okay. All right. Go ahead with number five.
Number four, I think?
I'm sorry.
Yes. Okay. Oh, wait a minute.
No. Number five.
Which one am I on? This one? "For the following reasons, the values of the..." Oh, number five, okay. "Owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because..." The general... Oh, no. Do I read that one?
Yeah. The general purpose of the building setback.
Okay. "The general purpose of the building setback ordinance does not take into account the special conditions that exist on our specific property. The property is unique in many ways, which causes a hardship when trying to locate a 22-foot-by-24-foot attached garage addition to the home. Site-specific hardships such as a town-owned gate between the two streets that border the property, the existence of a utility easement on the property, the geographic shape of the property, and the placement of the utilities that currently service the home make the proposed location of the new garage the only feasible spot. If the variance is denied, an unnecessary hardship will exist because, given the limited footprint for the construction of an attached two-car garage with a driveway access from 8 Freedom Street, no other option seems to logically exist. The current hardship and inconvenience of not being able to access our home from the legal address of 8 Freedom Street will continue to exist as well."
Questions? All right. Go ahead.
Okay. "The proposed use is a reasonable one because it will allow the construction of a two-car garage attached to the side of the home in the best possible location to be accessed from 8 Freedom Street. The addition of a garage is a reasonable feature on a residential home and will not alter the character of the neighborhood. The relocating of the driveway is reasonable because it only makes sense that property should be accessible from the home's legal street address. The Town of Merrimack's Fire Department is also in agreement that the property should be accessible from its legal 911 addresses."
All right. Any questions from the board? Rich?
Actually, I was reading through this. I think I figured out what I...
You're all set?
I think I am all set.
Patrick?
Good.
I know you came in late, Tony, but do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
All right. Then I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the room that would like to testify for this variance? Anyone who'd like to testify against it? And I have a couple of letters. The first one is from Mike Carrier, the fire chief. And it's addressed, Dear Philip and Kristen, Philip and Kristen Worcester of 8 Freedom Street. "After our meeting last week to review your plans to relocate your existing driveway, which is currently situated on Worcester Avenue, and reposition it to Freedom Street, we further..." "With further investigation into the question, meeting with the Public Works Department, Highway Foreman Jeff Strong, we have no issues with you changing the position of the driveway. Additionally, we feel that by moving the driveway to the Freedom Street, which is your actual street address for the structure, it would benefit all parties." And I believe there's one other one here. And this is addressed to whom it may concern on 1/29/2016 at the Town Community Development Department. At request from Diane Simmons, Philip Worcester inquired to me, being a representative of the Town of Merrimack Highway Department, if he could, one, move his driveway entrance to be located on Freedom Street, two, to eliminate, remove the existing drive entrance from Worcester Avenue, and, three, construct a two-car garage at the end of the new drive location. Upon site review and history search, I find there should be no issue with the above proposal so long as the driveway is constructed where shown on the attachment number two. And any new garage is not constructed in any manner that would encroach on the utility easement should be shown on the same attachment. Also included is attachment number one, showing approximate existing location of the house, garage, and driveway, and a copy of the recorded utility easement deed for said easement. Also note, also note the physical address of the property is 8 Freedom Street. And this is signed, Jeff Strong, Public Works Department, Highway Division, Highway Construction Inspection Foreman. And one last one. I think this is the last one, Gillian. And this is addressed to the Town of Merrimack Planning and Zoning Department, 6 Babuuk Lake Road, Merrimack, New Hampshire. To whom it may concern, my name is Sean Cobb. I am the owner and resident of 5 Worcester Avenue in Merrimack, New Hampshire. I have recently received a notification letter from the Town of Merrimack in regards to the property at 8 Freedom Street owned by Philip and Kristen Worcester. After reading this letter and talking to Philip, I understand that they want to build a garage and install a driveway to the side of their home within the setback lines of the property, which would require a variance from the zoning department. As an abutter to this property, I would like to say I have no issues with, nor do I see any problem with letting my neighbors build as they wish. Therefore, I am in favor of allowing the zoning board to grant a variance permitting them to move forward with their construction plan. And this is signed, sincerely, Sean Cobb." If no one wishes to testify in favor or against this petition, I close the public hearing. And any comments from the committee?
I think the gate in itself is justifiable hardship. Because that wasn't there when you guys moved in, I take it.
We moved there in 2002, and they just put the gate in like 10 years later. I mean, they just put it in. So it kind of changed our whole traffic flow and...
Yeah. Doesn't make sense.
I was just going to say, you know, all of a sudden, one day, they realized that the road should be blocked off, and they put up the gate, and that was it. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Philip Worcester, petitioner-owner, variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit construction of a 22-by-24-foot two-car garage 12 feet from the front property line whereas 30 feet is required. The parcel is located at 8 Freedom Street in the R Residential District, tax map 5C, lot 471, case number 2016-06, with the staff recommendation that if the variance is granted, that the applicant shall obtain a right-of-way permit from the Public Works Department for the relocated driveway.
Any second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Tony?
Yeah.
That was an aye?
That was an aye.
Okay. 4-0-0.
Thank you.
Good luck.
You're all set?
Thank you. You're all set?
You know, you have 30 days. Somebody may come up and say, "Thanks." Somebody may come up and say, "Hey, listen, I don't like the idea, but you can build this. You can start building this as quick as possible. It's your responsibility after. If they say you didn't like it, you have to stop."
We were hoping to wait for the spring.
Okay.
We just wanted to get ahead of this in case there was any issues.
So you'd be well beyond the 30 days anyway.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Good luck.
You're welcome.
The next item is Hayner Swanson, petitioner, and Penachuck Waterworks, Inc., owner, requesting a special exception under Section 2.02.7A4 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a head wall and associated riprap within the 20-foot, 25-foot wetland buffer. The parcel is located at 16 Daniel Webster Highway and Manchester Street in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts in 100 and 500 year flood hazard areas, tax map 1D, lot 001-1, case number 2016-7. And who's here to testify? We don't accept... It had to be in the pack. That was...
It's just a small scale of that, so you can see that close.
No, it's fine. We can see it.
It's two of them.
You signed in?
Yes.
If you'd give us just a quick overview of the... What you have for your petition, please.
Okay. My name is Jason Reimers. I'm with BCM Environmental and Land Law, and I represent Penachuck Waterworks. With us tonight is John Boivere. He's the project... He's the chief engineer at Penachuck Waterworks. And Mark Fillion is with us. He's the construction services manager at Penachuck Waterworks. And Steve Auger is the project manager with Hayner Swanson Incorporated in Nashua. Penachuck Waterworks is a wholly-owned subsidiary of Penachuck Corporation. They seek a special exception to construct a head wall and riprap within the 20-foot, 25-foot wetland buffer on land that's owned by Penachuck. The proposed work is in the Wetlands Conservation District, which is Section 2.02.7 of the zoning ordinance. And Section 2.02.7A1 provides that wetlands and a buffer around wetlands constitute wetlands conservation districts. The wetland in issue is Harris Pond, and the construction of a head wall and riprap is not permitted as of right in the Wetland Conservation District, and that's why we're here under... Seeking a special exception under Section 2.02.4. That section states that the board may grant a special exception if the proposed use will not conflict with the purposes of the Wetland Conservation District and upon the submission of a review of the proposed use by a certified wetland scientist. I will address the purposes of the Wetlands Conservation District in a little while. First, though, John Boivere of Penachuck will describe what the project is, and then Steve Auger of Hayner Swanson will discuss the state permits and the review by the wetlands scientist.
All right. If you would just hold on one moment, please. You have the... The application with the points of law on it. Would you read those first, please, and then you can go into your presentation?
Sure.
All right. Thank you.
Would you like me to just read the standards, the purposes?
Right. Yeah, that would be fine. And stop after every one of them.
Do you want me to give the reasons as to why?
No. Just read.
Okay.
Just read, and then we can go into any discussion you have.
Okay. The first, 1A, "To prevent the development of structures and other land uses on or adjacent to wetlands that would contribute to pollution of surface and groundwater, the proposed use will not conflict with this purpose because..."
Yeah. Go ahead with the buffer.
Okay.
Read the answer.
Read the...
The buffer disturbance.
Oh, I see. All right. I'm sorry. I follow you. "The buffer disturbance is merely to build a head wall and riprap necessary for the outlet pipe from the overflow structure as part of PWW's water main project to protect the Harris Pond water supply."
Okay. Any questions? Before I forget, I want to swear it. Lenny? You sit in for Lynn? Okay. All right. Any... No questions on number one? And the second part of it, please?
"To prevent the destruction and degradation of natural wetlands that provide flood protection, the proposed use will not conflict with this purpose because this area surrounding the head wall and riprap will be restored naturally. The riprap will prevent any slope degradation resulting from water discharge."
Questions?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
What do you mean by naturally?
Would you answer that one? Did you hear the question?
Steve Auger with Hayner Swanson. Our office is located at 3 Congress Street in Nashua. Simply by naturally, we mean we're not going to use any type of, you know, advanced fertilizers or anything like that. That should they, you know, wash into Harris Pond could, you know, cause some sort of contamination or whatnot.
So you're going to use the material that's already there as the buff... For the buffer?
Correct.
And is there... Quite honest with you, I went to go look at that property, and I had a hard time finding out where it was. And I think I was looking at the right place. But if there's grass and other stuff there, you're just going to... How are you going to do that? How are you going to prevent... How are you going to prevent, like a washaway or something like that? Are you going to put grass down? Are you going to, what are you going to put down so the water, the ground won't wash away during the rain or whatever?
Well, that's the, I mean, I can show you another plan here.
There's a walk. You can take it off. Modern technology. You're going to love it.
The, this plan right here shows an overview of the outlet structure and the box culvert and the head wall and this riprap area here. The whole point of it is the riprap is going to slow any water that would, you know, that would potentially cause a washout and whatnot. So, I mean, there's going to be some, you know, some type of, you know, minor grading that in order to help restore the land right next to where the head wall and the riprap are going to go. But there isn't going to be any slope degradation simply because of the riprap. That's the point of it.
Okay, thank you.
No, go on with the next one, please.
The third one. "To prevent unnecessary or excessive expenses to the town to provide and maintain essential service and utilities which arise because of inharmonious use of wetlands and adjacent upland areas. The proposed use will not conflict with this purpose because there will be no expense to the town associated with this project. The water main construction completion will instead serve to provide a fail-safe measure to protect the water supply in the event of a Harris Pond contamination."
All right, go ahead with the next one, please.
"To encourage those uses that can be appropriately and safely located in and around wetland areas. The proposed use will not conflict with this purpose because the proposed use will not impact any uses associated with wetlands. As noted, the overall scope of the project serves the community in a positive manner by ensuring the safety of the water supply in the event of a source contamination."
Any questions? All right, now, if you'd like to go into your presentation.
Good evening. For the record, I'm John Boivere. I'm the chief engineer with Penachuck. Office is at 25 Manchester Street. This is the head wall that we're talking about in question today is part of a larger, you know, a smaller component, albeit a very important one, to a much larger project. As we've stated before, we stated we're trying to protect, you know, we're trying to provide an alternative source or secure a second source of water in case the Penachuck Brook became compromised or contaminated. Right now, what we have is, we have two sources of water that feed the whole entire Penachuck Water System. One is Penachuck Brook, which is part of Bowers Dam, Bowers Reservoir, and Harris Pond. But also too, we have our secondary source, which is down here on the Merrimack River. So, in the event, right now, as this currently operates, you see the red line here, that's a line that transmits water up into Bowers Pond, and it flows into Harris Pond, and ultimately from Harris, it flows into our treatment facility at 200 Concord Street in Nashua, which is, I'm trying to see, it's kind of messed up. There we go, right here. Then, but as you can see, it all flows, one source flows into the other and flows in down. So it's really, even though it's two sources of water, it's still only one because they combine and they merge at Bowers. So if something were to spill on the Everett Turnpike and contaminate Penachuck Brook, or something was to turn over or go off the bridge at, on Manchester Street, we would basically contaminate our source, and all we could do is pump water in to dilute it at this point in time. So the larger project here was the recent construction of a 36-inch pipeline that went down Manchester Street, kind of went around Harris Pond, and now comes in and ties in at our treatment facility here at Concord Street. So we have two pipelines, and we can go from one source by pumping into Bowers and in, just like we normally do. But in the event of an emergency, we can pump directly from the Merrimack into our plant. So we've got a fail-safe, there's two separate sources of water that we have now. The relief structure is important because what happens is, up at the top of the hill here, where, right near our office at 25 Manchester Street, is the high point. So we pump up from the Merrimack River, it goes to a high point, and then it basically flows downhill. And what happens is, in that line, we can have the potential of building up too much pressure for our treatment plant. So when that happens, it could cause issues with valves and piping and a bunch of other stuff in the plant. So this relief structure basically is a weir. Water flows into it, it relieves the pressures when we don't, if we don't need enough water, if we don't need all the water that's coming down the pipeline, it actually spills over a weir and flows into Harris Pond like it normally would and devours. So it's a fail-safe, so that wouldn't cause damage to our facility, which would render the facility potentially inoperable. So, as part of the project, it's just the overview here is to give you, the point is is that the relief structure is a fail-safe protection method that we have for our facilities. At the same time, we're providing potentially, you know, two separate sources of water for our facility.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
It might be way off base, but is there a possibility of both those sources of water being contaminated at the same time?
It's certainly always the case. I mean, we've looked long and hard at this because I think, and I haven't been working for Penachuck for 10 years, but many of you might have been in the area for a long time. You know, has a tractor trailer turned over on the Everett? You know, not storing, you know, not carrying gasoline, not probably right at the location of where it crosses at Bowers. So it's a low probability event. But the consequences of it, when it does happen, are extreme, you know, are extreme. The result of that is telling people not to drink their water, you know, and some of the issues that you've seen in other parts of the country where sources have been compromised. So what we've done is, is that we've looked at, we're mitigating those risks. Anything is always possible, but what we're trying to do is manage what is probable in a manner that is cost-effective as well, too. And that's why we're looking at these, you know, doing the piping that we've done.
The reason I'm asking is, we've got some water bodies that are in the 100-year flood plan.
Yep.
And within 10 years, they flooded three or four times already. So that's, that's why I'm asking.
Right. And we've actually, in the process for our water bodies here, you know, from a safety perspective, we've doing, as you might be aware, we're doing upgrades to our spillways and everything at Harris Dam to make sure that it, you know, is compliant with the 100-year flood and those types of upgrades that we're doing. So there is always a probability that if, you know, a dam were to be compromised, you know, through a large flood, we still have this pipeline that can actually feed water to the facility, even if our dams or systems were compromised. So that's that whole balance of what we're looking at, is risk in, you know, risk, cost, and, you know, effectiveness.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Johnny.
Is Manchester Street salt-free?
Yes, yes, it is. I think there's been a few times when we've had very nasty cold icy weather where we said, you know, to the Public Works, both in Nashua and in Merrimack, that if you need to from a safety issue, yes. But it is, it's, I can't remember if it's salt-free. I think the sign says, "Low salt or possibly salt-free." I drive by it a million times and just probably never really paid too much attention.
I was just curious, because that could contaminate your water.
Yeah. It's, if you look at the amount of salt that we see and the flows that we have coming down, it's not, it's not as bad. It's not like, I think it would be like Exit 2, Exit 3, Interstate 93, where you got large expanses of pavement and development. We don't really see that here in this. But, yeah, it's always a concern. But for the most part, the DOT was very nice and put in some, you know, control structures that helped mitigate that as well, too.
Thank you.
All right, do you have anything further in your presentation?
Yeah. Okay, Jason just reminded me, the actual, just one little quick thing, and Steve will get up and do some summary here. But the structure is actually out of the wetland, it's not really part of the reason why we're here now. But it's basically, I want to describe it, it's a, it's a large box, essentially. It's a concrete box where a pipe comes in, and, you know, this, you got the picture? There we go. Stay right there. And as you can see, it looks like a big manhole, essentially, but it has a bunch of, a pipe coming in, pipe coming out, and then there's weirs in it. So when we're not, if we're pumping, let's say we're pumping 10,000 gallons a minute into this pipeline going to the plant, but the plant's only using 9,000 gallons of that going through the plant, 1,000 gallons will spill over and go through the overflow structure and be relieved, so that we're not overpressurizing the rest of the facility. And that's how it works. It's very simple. There's no valves, no mechanical things. It's, keep it very, very simple, so we don't have, you know, mechanical things. We could do it mechanically, but mechanical things fail. Whereas this is nice, simple, and clean.
Steve Auger is going to talk about permitting and the wetland scientist's review.
Good evening, Steve Auger again. A few items back, before we were able to submit to the zoning board, we needed to go to the Conservation Commission to get their approval for this. Back on February 1st, myself and Mr. Mark Fillion of Penachuck, who's in the audience with us, we did go before the Conservation Commission, made a very similar presentation, answered their questions, and we did receive their approval in the affirmative. As Attorney Reimers noted, as part of the zoning board application, we needed a letter from our wetland scientists concerning any potential wetland impacts. We have that here. If you'd like, I could read that into the record, Madam Chairman.
Is it this letter right here?
Yes.
If you'd like, go ahead.
The letter is, it is from Wetland Consulting Services, specifically Mr. Robert Prokop, who is a certified wetland scientist in New Hampshire, and is addressed to Mr. Tim Thompson of the Merrimack Community Development Department. Dear Mr. Thompson, as required by the special exception application, I wish to offer a brief environmental assessment regarding the ongoing raw water main project. It is my understanding that the project will serve as a bypass connecting the existing water supply from the Merrimack River to the Daniel Webster Highway Treatment Plant. In the event that Bowers Pond or Harris Pond should become contaminated in some manner, the newly constructed 36-inch water main will ensure the availability of safe drinking water for the area served by the treatment plant. Wetland Consulting Services inspected the survey route in Merrimack, New Hampshire on December 1st of 2014. The purpose of that site visit was to determine if any jurisdictional wetlands lie across or within 50 feet of the new waterline route. The area inspected included Manchester Street from Henry Clay Road South to the southern entrance to the Heron Cove Development. It also included a 3,200-foot cross-country route across undeveloped Penachuck land east of Manchester Street and extending to the water plant at the outlet of Harris Pond. Upon inspection of the route area, in the area within 50 feet of the route, no wetlands of any kind were found except for Harris Pond itself. The construction of a pressure relief structure is a necessary aspect of this project. The head wall and riprap located at the end of the proposed box culvert will need to be constructed inside of the 25-foot wetland buffer. This is a temporary impact to the buffer. While there will be some tree and shrub clearing within the 25-foot buffer, no wetlands will be impacted from the project. Consequently, it is my opinion that there will be no or minimal environmental impact as a result of the buffer zone disturbance. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Sincerely, Robert Prokop.
Okay, thank you for reading that.
The last piece of information I have for you is, as part of the overall project that Mr. Boivere was talking about, we did have to get a shoreland permit because a portion of the 36-inch pipe fell within the 250-feet shoreline. So we did obtain that permit. We are going to have to amend that permit, and the reason here is, let me just approach my plan here. It's basically, the amendment to the shoreline permit is going to be for this structure here. As Mr. Boivere explained, this is the structure here, and here flows the head wall. This red line here represents the 25 feet from the shoreline. So you can see how the head wall and the riprap fall in there, and that's basically the special exception we're asking for. On this plan here, this is just a blow-up of it, so you can get a better picture of what the head wall and the riprap are going to look like. Here's the edge of the pond, and this red line indicates the 25-foot back from the structure. So as I said, we will be amending our plan, or our permit, and filing that again to the state of New Hampshire to get the appropriate shoreline permit.
Johnny, you're the water guide. Any questions?
How far away are you from the wetlands? I don't want to look through the numbers, but can you just tell me, before I'm going through the whole?
The, that, the blue line on the plan represents the edge of the pond there.
And how, you're going to amend it to what? To the wetlands? Can you please tell me what the amendment's going to say?
Oh, no, the amendment merely is, the shoreline permit indicated a certain square footage of area that was going to be disturbed as part of the overall pipe construction project. So all we have to do to amend the original shoreline permit is just a calculation, basically, of the area of where the structure's going to go, and then the culvert and the head wall and the riprap, because that's just an additional disturbance. It's like a thumb that came off the main 36-inch line.
Less disturbance or more disturbance?
Well, it's going to be, it's going to be more disturbance, but I mean, we're not disturbing the wetlands. It's just the disturbance associated within the shoreline.
You okay with that?
Sure, yeah. I got the disturbance. Reason why she says I'm a water person, I'm a water commissioner in town. And I've dealt with Penachuck Waterworks before.
Jillian, I'm going to read in the letter from the Conservation Commission also. Do you have anything further?
I was going to address the special exception criteria in more detail.
All right, go ahead.
Going back to the first purpose, and I apologize, I'll try not to be redundant of what was in the application. The first purpose that we need to satisfy is to prevent the development of structures and other land uses on or adjacent to wetlands that would contribute to pollution of surface and groundwater. The proposed use will not conflict with this purpose because it will not contribute to pollution of surface or groundwater. And as John Boivere explained, the raw water main project will actually prevent the pollution of the supply pond in the event that Penachuck Brook, Bowers Pond, is contaminated. So we'll actually protect the drinking water supply from pollution. The second purpose of the Wetland Conservation District is to prevent the destruction and degradation of natural wetlands that provide flood protection. And as we learned from the wetland scientist, Mr. Prokop, no wetlands will be impacted by the project. And if no wetlands will be even impacted, you know, the standard in the zoning ordinance is that they not be destroyed or degraded. So if there's no impact, submit that they won't be destroyed or degraded. And the project takes place completely in the buffer, not in the wetland itself. The area surrounding the head wall and riprap will be restored naturally. Mr. Prokop, the wetland scientist, also stated that there will be a temporary impact to the buffer that will result in, quote, "no or minimum, minimal environmental impact to the buffer." So this will not destroy or degrade wetlands, nor will it destroy or degrade the buffer. The project will introduce raw water into Harris Pond, not storm, not dirty water, not storm runoff. And so this, there's no conflict with the purpose of the Wetlands Conservation District. The third purpose of the district is to prevent unnecessary or excessive expenses to the town to provide and maintain essential service and utilities which arise because of inharmonious use of wetlands and adjacent upland areas.
Excuse me, you've...
You don't want me to read?
You've given us these points already.
Okay, you're right, I didn't, I didn't know if you wanted me to read them over.
No, no, we're all set on that.
Okay. As I stated before, there will be no inharmonious use of the wetland. The fourth purpose, you know, the zoning ordinance allows many uses in the Wetlands Conservation District as a matter of right, without needing a special exception. And, you know, these uses include agriculture, water impoundment, and various other things. And the installation of a head wall and riprap within this area around them restored by a natural, restored by a natural vegetation is another use that can appropriately and safely be located near a wetland.
All right, thank you. I've got a letter I've got to read into the minutes. This is from the conservation commission. It's, on Monday evening, February 1st, 2016, the commission, conservation commission discussed a proposed overflow outlet structure, pipe, and swale leading to Harris Pond that would be installed within a 25-foot wetland no disturb buffer. The structure is proposed to be installed on tax map parcel 1D-1-1 off of Manchester Street. The parcel is owned by the Penachuk Water Works. Steve Ozier of Haynes, Swans, Hayner Swanson Incorporated, and Mark Fillion of Penachuk Water Works visited with the commission to explain the project. They came to get our recommendation and asked that we share it with your board so you can also consider the recommendation as part of your process when they appear before you. Steve and Mark went over the need and the extent of the incursion into the no disturb buffer. They explained how this outlet would act as a safety mechanism for the water line that they are installing. The commission asked a number of questions relating to the water line, how their pond and water system works, and about the construction of the outlet. After all the questions were answered, the commission voted for 1-1 to favor to make the following recommendations to your board. The commission has reviewed the project and plans and has no, project plans and has no concerns with the disturbance in the buffer area and with the project as presented on February 1st, 2016. Please feel free to contact me if you have any questions. Sincerely signed, Tim Tenhae, Chairman, Conservation Commission. So the conservation commission has no problem. So, does the board have any questions? You all set, Tony?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Okay. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing on this, and is there anyone here who would like to testify for this petition? Is there anyone here who would like to testify against it? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. And any further questions, remarks, concerns from the committee? Okay, can I hear a motion, please?
Motion to approve Hayner Swanson petitioner and Penachuk Water Works Inc. owner, special exemption under section 2.02.7A4 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a head wall and associated riprap within 25 feet of the wetland buffer. The parcel is located at 16 Daniel Webster Highway and Manchester Street in the I-1 Industrial Aquifer Conservation Districts and 100-year and 500-year flood hazard areas, tax map 1D lot 001-1 case number 2016-07.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
400.
Five.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
500, you're all set. Okay, we are going to push the next item to...
What's next?
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Meridian Land Services Inc. petitioner and M. Robin Warren revocable trust owner, requesting a variance under section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a two-lot subdivision with one of the lots having 40 feet frontage, whereas 250 feet is required. The parcel is located at 17 Noelwood Drive in the R1 Residential in Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 6C 292-2, case number 2016-8. And who will be speaking on this?
My name is Mike Hammer. I'm a land surveyor. I'm with Meridian Land Services.
Would you sign in also, please?
I will.
All right, if you'd just give us a quick overview, 100 words or less, and then you can go right into your, then we'll go over the points of law, and then you can go over your spiel. How's that?
Okay. The parcel in question currently had joy's frontage on two separate streets, Noelwood and Joppa Road, and Merrimack, obviously. Currently, the portion that's developed comes off of Noelwood, has 40 feet of frontage at that particular location. There's a substantial amount of land that remains that has frontage on Joppa Hill, oh, Joppa Road, rather, and the client is interested in subdividing a separate residence off of I don't mean to be redundant, but most of these items are identified in the five points, so it would be best just to summarize that.
All right, go ahead with that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And again, if you would stop after every item.
Absolutely. So one germane bit of information is we require 200 feet of frontage here, which we amply meet on the Joppa roadside. In addition to that, we have area questions that will come up shortly. Granting the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. Oh, by the way, would you like me to stop at each point, or would you like me to run through all the points?
Just stop after, you've completed, complete number one when you complete number two.
Okay. So granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. As the courts have stated, to be contrary to the public interest, the variance must unduly and in a marked degree conflict with the ordinance such that it violates the ordinance's basic zoning objectives. The primary objective of the residential zone is to provide for residential uses. The Town of Merrimack zoning ordinance in Building Code, Section 3, Lot and Yard Regulations, clearly indicates that the zoning objective is to safely accommodate septic systems. The proposed lot has an existing structure on it and is being, is being accessed from the 40-foot frontage. No public rights will be adversely affected by allowing the requested relief as the lot is already developed.
Questions? No, go ahead.
The spirit of the ordinance observed because the lot is larger than the other lots in the vicinity and currently supports a residential dwelling.
And number three?
Granting the variance would do substantial justice because substantial justice is done when the loss to the applicant in denying the variance would exceed any gain to the general public by strictly enforcing the ordinance's requirements. Granting the requested variance will allow the property to be developed in a way that is consistent with the surrounding lots in the neighborhood. Accordingly, a denial of the variances will result in irreparable, will not result in irreparable gain in the, for the general public, but will cause substantial loss to the applicant by preventing the best use of the property.
Questions? Go ahead.
For the following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. The property was developed for, the proposed lot was developed for uses of residence. This is consistent with the properties in the surrounding area. The proposed lot is also substantially larger than the minimum lot area required. Unnecessary hardship owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguishes it from the other properties in the area. Denial of the variance would result in an unnecessary hardship because, one, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance's provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because the special conditions of this lot are inherent in the parcel. It is 12.6 acres in size, and the minimum lot size is 100,000 square feet. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance's use restrictions and the specific application to those restrictions to the property because the residential development allows for the most efficient and practical development of the property. Two, the proposed use is reasonable one because residential development is allowed in the R1 zone and is consistent with the other lots in the area. The proposed lots can support individual septic systems and related residential developments, and the proposed lot would not injure any public or private rights.
Okay, any questions?
I do, and just for clarification purposes, so the current lot already has the 40 feet of frontage in existence today.
Correct.
And the subdivision, I'm assuming the frontage will be on Joppa Road?
That's correct.
So, okay, so the new property that's proposed due to the subdivision will not require any variances to be built on?
Correct.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Any further questions? I'm going to open the public hearing. And is there anyone who would like to testify in favor of this petition? All right, have you been sworn in? Have you been sworn in, sir?
Yes.
If you would just move over and let the gentleman sit there, so...
Ken Page, Six Ridgewood Drive. I'm a director butter of the property, and I see no problem with what she plans to do with it.
You speak up to Mike, just so you can get out of there.
I'm Ken Page, Six Ridgewood Drive. I'm a director butter of her property, and I've looked it all over where she went to plan it, and I see no problems with the plan as presented.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to testify in favor of this petition? Anyone who'd like to testify against it? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Sure, I'd like to make the motion to grant Meridian Land Services petitioner and M. Robin Warren revocable trust variance under section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a two-lot subdivision with one of the lots having 40 feet of frontage, whereas 250 feet is required. Parcel is located at 17 Noelwood Drive in the R1 Residential in Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 6C, lot 292-2, case 2016-08. And the staff recommendations are that the applicant shall obtain subdivision approval from the planning board for the proposed two-lot subdivision.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Tony. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, you're all set.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
All right, the next item, the Meridian Land Services...
We need that, right?
For 190 Babusick Lake Road, we're going to move to the last item. All right, the next item will be Fieldstone Land Consultants, PLLC, and College Bound Movers petitioners, and Sam A. Tamposi, Harold Watson, and Benjamin, and Clegg Wasowski owners, requesting a variance under section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a 3,000-square-foot building addition with a front setback of 39 feet, whereas 50 feet is required. The parcel is located at 14 Continental Boulevard in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area, tax map 3C, lot 089, case number 2016-10.
Before we have to leave, which we will because we're not on that case, number eight I've requested to be withdrawn, not withdrawn, but delayed till next month. You may want to handle that in case there are any others here, if I'm sure.
Which one?
Eight.
Eight? You want to do what?
Eight.
It's the dwelling unit one. Number eight on your agenda.
The 190 Babusick?
We sent out a request yesterday, requested to delay that.
DWI.
The 427 DWI?
427 DWI.
Yeah, that has been, we know that is, we've been notified that it's scheduled for next month.
It is, it is tabled to next month. I'd like a public announcement so we don't have to re-advertise, please, if I could. Just the date and the time of that, of that particular item, if we could have that.
Okay, the item number 2016-dash... Eleven has been tabled to next month per request of the petitioner.
We need the date, please.
That would be March 30th.
Thank you. It's 7:00 AM, correct? 7:00 PM, I'm sorry.
No, no, we've changed it to 6:00 AM.
See you there.
Okay, okay. I might be looking for board members, but be that as it may, thank you. All right, we'll get out of your way. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, your name, please?
Good evening. My name is Chris Gata. I am a certified wetland scientist and soil scientist with Fieldstone Land Consultants. Our office is at 206 Elm Street in Milford, New Hampshire, and I'm representing Ed Smith and College Bound Movers tonight.
All right, if you would just give us a real quick overview, and then we'll go into the points of law, and then you can do your presentation.
The project is located on Continental Boulevard, and they're looking to do a small addition for office space to an industrial, commercial-type facility, and that office space will need to be located within the front setback.
If you want to go into the points of law and then your presentation?
Number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because granting this variance would allow for the productive use of the existing property. Zoning ordinances are generally written to manage the development in towns to allow for responsible and reasonable development and expansion. And considering that the proposed addition will enhance the visual appearance from the street and will be consistent with the office space that currently exists in the front of the adjacent unit two, this will be consistent and also be consistent with the surrounding properties. be consistent and also be consistent with the surrounding properties, we believe that this proposal is reasonable. It is our opinion that this project will substantially improve the aesthetics of the subject parcel and the surroundings. Due to the above reasons and the fact that this proposal will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or threaten the health, safety, or general welfare of the public, we believe this proposal would not be contrary to the public interest.
All right, anyone have a question or comment? All right, go ahead.
Number two, granting the variance would observe the spirit of the ordinance because this proposal is consistent with the surroundings and consistent with what currently exists on-site and the abutting properties and adjacent properties, and will improve the aesthetics of the parcel. We believe to the extent, to the intent of this ordinance is provide adequate separation and buffering to enhance the visual appearance from the adjacent street, and since the proposed addition will enhance the visual appearance and will be consistent with the office space that currently exists in front of the unit two, which is adjacent to that, unit one, we believe there should be consideration given to the setback requirement. The proposed use is permitted in the zoning district, and the addition is also consistent with the existing development on the parcel and the area of the town. The site plan demonstrates that there is adequate space on the subject properties to support this development. Due to the reasons above and the fact that this proposal will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or threaten the health, safety, or general welfare of the public, we believe that this proposal would observe the spirit of the ordinance.
Questions? All right, go ahead with number three.
Granting this variance would do substantial justice because it would allow for a local business to grow and address an increasing demand for their product as well as the need for office space, which is not present in the existing unit. The applicant is looking to grow in this location and being that it's desirable and its proximity to the highway, the proposal will result in no negative impacts to the neighborhood as this property has always been occupied by a commercial or industrial use, which is consistent with its surroundings. The project will also have no negative impacts on the local services and will increase the tax basis for the town. And granting this variance would do substantial justice because it would allow for the productive use of the property as described above while providing responsible growth in the community.
Questions? All right, go ahead with number four.
Granting the variance would not diminish the values of the surrounding properties because this proposal will consist of expanding the existing building on the subject property to contemplate a 3,000-square-foot office addition for unit one, and unit two already has a 3,000-square-foot addition in a similar location, and will simply provide each unit with the necessary office space and will provide symmetry and curb appeal from Continental Boulevard. In our opinion, this proposal would improve the property and associated values and local tax base, which ultimately means it will have a positive impact on the community. The construction of the addition and its associated use would be consistent with the surrounding uses and is a permitted use in the zoning district. It has also been our experience that new construction and development will oftentimes actually increase the value of surrounding properties. For all of these reasons, we would expect this project to have a positive impact on the surrounding property values, as it will rejuvenate the site and surroundings.
The question that I have, I'm sorry, is just in regard to the comment from three, are you correlating the increase in tax base to the 3,000 square feet added? Is that where the, is the comment from increasing the tax base, I'm wondering what that's derived from?
Basically, by adding the additional facility, the additional office space, it allows for the use of this property for what they want, and will allow for that business to operate in that space.
Well, I'm going to ask because the...
Because you've used tax base twice, and that really has nothing to do with us.
Well, no, actually, I was just curious, I mean, someone has to be paying taxes on it right now, so.
Yes.
That's all, I'm just confused how that...
Well, it benefits, it benefits the building. It basically is an improvement to the building. I would imagine when there's an improvement to the building, there's an adjustment to the taxes.
I see, so like the assessment.
The improvement overall to the building would be substantial justice.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, makes sense. Thank you.
All right, I have a quick question here. You say this is unit two. Have you outright bought unit two? Is this what they've done, or are they renting it?
I believe they're in the process of purchasing the building.
Okay, because I was going to say, it doesn't make much sense to put that much money into a rental.
Right, they're going to be operating the unit where we're requesting the variance.
Okay, go ahead.
Unnecessary hardship. Rememac zoning ordinance requires that a 50-foot front yard setback be provided. Again, we believe that this intent of the ordinance is provide adequate separation and buffering to the street and to allow for, to enhance the visual, excuse me, visual appearance of the property. The proposed addition will do that from the street, and there, and basically it will add symmetry to the building. What the unit two has in addition in the front, in the front of it right now, is an industrial-looking type of building on unit one, and this will allow for a more businesslike, aesthetically pleasing facade. We do not believe that the proposed addition will have a negative impact on the general public, and based on the above, we do not believe that a fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. The proposed use is a reasonable one because, for the reasons previously stated, we believe that this proposal meets the spirit and intent of the ordinance, and the proposed development will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or threaten the health, safety, or general welfare of the public. It is our opinion that this project will rejuvenate an existing parcel in town, which we will believe will substantially increase the aesthetics of the subject parcel and the surroundings. The use proposed for the property is permitted in the underlying zoning and will be consistent with the surroundings. The site plans demonstrate there's adequate space on the subject property to support this redevelopment, and since the proposal will improve the neighborhood and be consistent with the surroundings and result in no negative impacts to the public, we believe the proposed use is reasonable.
All right, if you would just wait a moment. Do you feel that he's met the other requirements?
I do.
You can disregard reading D.
Okay.
Now, I have a question, and it was the same question I asked when you were going to use the other property. Are you going to have pods or trailers on that property, and are you going to stack them?
I believe as part of the business, there will be pods on the property. I'm not sure of the specific uses for the property or how they manage those pods. I'm not intimately familiar with the operation of the business and the storage of those. It's my understanding that the majority of them will be inside.
Yeah, this is also industrial, so...
I know, but the other area was industrial residential, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, because they wanted to put it in the residential side.
Yeah, if, therefore, there's always the possibility for break-ins, et cetera, that's why I was asking.
Oh, okay.
You mean actually, storage of...
Storage of full trailers or pods outside.
Yeah, I can't speak to that, I'm not sure the specifics of the business operation in that aspect. We're really just looking for the available, to create some available office space right now.
Anyone have any questions or remarks, comments? Tony?
I was just asking, Steph, when they came to you people for this, the petitioners, did they specify if they were going to have pods or buildings or anything like that outside during the business, like what friends said?
It's our understanding that that will be inside the warehouse.
All of it.
There are some outdoor storage areas, but they have not specified that they would have pods outside. I think that's for trailers and trucks.
Okay, thank you.
Would they need to, even if they were?
Would they need to?
Would they need to address that if they were?
As part of the site plan, they would.
Oh, okay, so, all right, that makes sense.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I'll open the public hearing.
Would you like me to?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
On the aerial photograph here, it gives a good representation, basically, here's our site. It's very similar in all these other buildings along Continental Boulevard, and you can see that they all have very similar bumpouts in the front with office spaces, and I suspect that all of these are within the front setback line, as the unit two is here. So, this being an industrial space and opening, there really just isn't enough office space available in that area, and they need all that warehouse space for their operations, which is why they're requesting to build some office space in the front. Part of just operating the business as a necessity. This hatched area is basically the proposed addition, which is identical to the existing addition on unit two. The only other addition would be to relocate the existing walkway, which goes in here to the front to match that proposed addition, and the addition of handicap parking spaces here. This will also provide for handicap access into the office space. The rest of the area, it's a fairly small lot for this type of use. The back is all loading docks. We basically need the other area here for truck traffic, semi-trailers to back in here in the parking spaces for these other units, so really the only available space would be to the front. And it just makes sense as far as increasing the facade, making it more aesthetically pleasing, and matching it to the existing one on unit two.
All right, any questions from the board? Now may I open the public hearing? Is there anyone here who would like to testify for this petition? Anyone who'd like to testify against it? Close the public hearing. Could I have a motion, please?
I have a motion to approve. I'm going to say that I think that it's a good idea, I mean, to make the, for the symmetry. I think that it looks good, and I think that, you know, you're absolutely right, most of the buildings on Continental Boulevard have that, and I like the fact that you're reusing the existing space as opposed to, you know, looking to build, that they're using what's there. So, I'm going to make a motion to approve Fieldstone Land Consultants, PLLC, and College Bound Movers petitioners, and Sam A. Tamposi, Harold Watson, and Benjamin, and Clegg Wasowski owners, variance under Section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a 3,000-square-foot building addition with a front setback of 39 feet whereas 50 feet is required. The parcel is located at 14 Continental Boulevard in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area, tax map 3C, Lot 089, case number 2016-010. Oh, sorry, yep, thank you, Xena, for reminding me. Board recommendation that the petitioner shall obtain a site plan approval for the proposed addition from the planning board.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five, zero, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the next item that was on the agenda, our case number 2016-11, at 427 DW Highway, has been continued to next month. All right, the next item is Arthur D. King, petitioner-owner, variance from Section 2.02.1.1A to permit a home occupation with more than one employee not residing at the premises, whereas only one person not residing at the premises is allowed. The parcel is located at 43 Bates Road in the R2 Residential District, tax map 3A, Lot 008, case number 2016-12. Your name, sir?
Arthur King.
All right. Could you just give us a quick overview?
I'm a part-owner and a family-owned construction management firm. It's myself, my parents. Currently, the office is at their residence in Nashua. They're elderly, they're part-timers in Florida now, and the idea is to build an office/garage on the property and move the company there. Most of our work is done on projects off-site, and the only thing we do in the office currently is design and bidding. So, we have two young engineers and a part-time secretary. So, that's the plan.
All right, you have two part-time engineers and a secretary that work on the property now?
No, that work in our current office.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to clarify that. All right, if you would go into the variance application?
Certainly. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. The lot in question is more than adequately sized to fit the new construction in the designated area. The new garage will not cause increased disturbance to the abutters due to traffic or appearance. The proposed construction will be engineering and office work only, no fabrication will be done on the site.
Questions? Go ahead.
Two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because all other zoning requirements are met. The plot contains adequate land and abutment distances to not disturb the abutters, and the construction is in similar design to the surrounding area, which means the area will not be adversely affected. No fabrication will be done on-site, only engineering and office work will be performed.
Engineering, mechanical?
It's mostly CAD work on the computer.
Okay, all right.
All right, number three?
Actually, I do have a question.
I'm sorry.
So, as part of this, will there be any type of external indication of a home occupation?
None whatsoever. No signs. We don't have to advertise, we bid on construction projects, mostly state and federal projects.
Okay, thank you.
Three, granting the variance would do substantial justice because, granting the variance would do substantial justice because it will not adversely affect the neighboring area and does not threaten public health and safety.
Go ahead.
Four, for the following reasons, the values of surrounding properties will not be diminished. The proposed garage area is in the same general aesthetic design as the neighboring plots as to blend in, so it will not affect the property value of the area. In addition, the added traffic will be minimal and will not affect the area adversely.
All right, go ahead.
Five, unnecessary hardship. The proposed new construction will not cause great increases in traffic. The garage area and proposed driveway will contain all vehicles needed. In addition...
In addition, the general design of the new construction is in general accordance with the neighboring buildings, so as not to detract from the aesthetics of the community. In addition, rejection of the variance will result in the owner needing to pay rent for additional office space.
And the second part?
And two, the proposed use is reasonable, one, because the intended increase in the number of non-residence employees will be kept to a minimum. An anticip- an anticipated variance of two engineers and a secretary is intended.
Alright, you feel that he's answered everything? Alright, you can skip that, be there.
I have a question.
Yes.
In one of these that you, you put here, one of the drawings that you sent over, you put the, you put your home here.
Yeah.
And your proposed garage over here.
Correct.
How are you getting to the proposed garage? Are you putting in a driveway? Are you putting a, are they gonna park in your driveway and walk over?
Uh, no, I'm gonna put a driveway around the, around the garage. If you look, there's two garage doors on the backside of the garage plan area.
Right, so how do they access that, that driveway?
There's an existing driveway there now.
So, it's gonna be, come off of your residential driveway?
No, there's, there's a second driveway, a gravel driveway in that area. That's a clear.
Unless, unless that, okay, sorry.
It's a, a five-acre property.
What about expansion? You foresee?
No.
More expansion, more engineers?
I've, uh, no, I mean, we've, we've been there 12 years. We hire a lot of interns and we train them right out of UNH. One of, one of my engineers is a recent grad. He's worked for us for four years. The other one's actually an intern, so he's part-time. We may hire him on, but I don't anticipate growing any bigger. Payroll's already too high. To be honest with you.
Alright, alright, okay.
Geez, 12 years and we didn't even know you were there. Okay, any questions from the board?
My question's answered.
Tony?
Nope.
Rich? Lenny? Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to testify in favor of this petition? Anyone who'd like to testify against? I'll close the public hearing. Could I have a motion, please?
I motion to approve Arthur King, the variance from Section 2.02.1.1A-2A, to permit a home occupation with more than one employee not residing at the premises, whereas only one person not residing at the premises is allowed. The parcel's located at 43 Bates Road in the R2 Residential District, tax map 3A Lot 008, case 2016-12.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five zero zero.
Favorite conditions?
Did you grab the conditions on that?
My apologies, there are two staff recommendations. One, petitioner shall obtain home occupation approval from the planning board. And two, following planning board approval of the home occupation, the petitioner shall obtain all required permits from the building division for both the new garage slash office and septic system proposed as part of the project.
Absolutely.
Good to go.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Alright, the last item on the agenda is Meridian Land Services, Inc., petitioner, in Northview Homes and Development, Inc., owner, requesting variances under Section 1.03A-25 of the zoning ordinance to permit a four-lot subdivision with two of the lots having frontage on Class VI road. The parcel is located at 190 Babusak Lake Road in the R3 Residential District, tax map 5B Lot 045, and case number 2016-09.
Good evening.
Attorney Greg Michael. I'm here with Ken Clinton from Meridian Land Services for the petitioners of this particular proposal. This is a fairly unique situation and a unique request to the board. I, I'm gonna tell you that at the outset. We're dealing with approximately nine-acre parcel of land that abuts not only Babusak Lake Road, but also has frontage on a Class V road. This is part of Old Blood that's, excuse me, Class VI road, has Class VI status. So, it stretches between these two roads, both of which are town roads. But as the board is well aware, to be used or available for frontage for subdivision purposes, you need to be on a Class V road. There are a couple of other exceptions to that, but for all practical purposes, that's what you need. Another feature of the property is bisected in the area where, where you see the green with a fair amount of wetlands. The other part of it that's rather unique is most of, the balance of it's slight soils. We see very few slight soil lots. So, this parcel has a number of different kind of things that you could do with it. You know, I wanna make that clear at the outset, in terms of subdivision or development. There is an old classic house, and I think that's referenced in your memo from staff. Here on the property, we fully intend to keep that. That will not be raised. That we become part of the subdivision in one of the lots. The proposal that we're making to the board is to make this, how do I put it? A logical subdivision, both in look, style, and nature. You can see this lot is over, they're all over two acres, two acres plus lots. This would be the old historic lot. We'd have a second lot off the Busak Lake Road, as well as two lots with frontage on Old Blood Road. We'd retain the stone walls and use Old Blood. Remember, this is a public road. The public is allowed to use it. We would bring in a, essentially, a roadway driveway and service the two parcels in the location that is shown on the plan, which has been provided to you. Water, town water's available. Lots would be serviced by septics. We have done test pits. They're more than satisfactory for that particular purpose, for the septics. And as you can see, it's four lots on approximately nine acres with slight soils, essentially. So, it's certainly able to be subdivided without a great deal of difficulty. There is a permutation of this that I, I think is important to show the board at the outset that we don't really like very much, but is technically a legal way to go with us. We have enough frontage on Babusak for the four lots. We have sufficient frontage, sufficient soils, sufficient area to actually carve it up in a fashion that you see. It would meet the requirements, but we don't believe that that really is the best way to go with this parcel. That's why we're before the board, because we believe good development means a good plan. We believe that just because you can do something doesn't mean it's the best way to do it. But I just wanna make it clear that there's another way to kind of deal with this parcel. We believe this is a much better way to deal with the parcel. But it requires assistance from the board. We think it's reasonable, and we believe it meets the criteria.
So, I, I have a question about that.
Go ahead.
In accordance with the New Hampshire RSA, they have the right to gate that road off at any time, similar to a case we heard earlier tonight. So, if you do that and they gate the road off, I mean, does it make sense to build properties where the road, by definition in New Hampshire, can be gated off?
Well, I mean, this, this is a, I don't, I, that's a difficult thing to respond to because the, anybody that abuts this road, I want you, I wanna be careful about this. I'm trying not to get into a road discussion, but if I have to, I will. This roadway, at the very least, is always open to people who abut it and need it for access. I wanna make that real clear. Always available. So, if there's a gate there, they've gotta give us a key to lock. You can't lock a Class VI road with a gate and deny people that abut that road access. I wanna make that clear. It would certainly block others, I expect, but people who need it for access, by statute, are allowed to use it. Okay, we clear on that? I just wanna make sure we're clear on that. There's some interesting aspects to it.
Who's gonna maintain the road if, if it's not being maintained by the state?
The, the, the town will not be maintaining this road. As part of our request, this, this road, and you saw in your minutes some information regarding 67441, you know, we would be filing in the registry of deeds the customary indemnity agreement regarding repair and maintenance of Old Blood Road for the purposes of access, which means the owners would know in advance that they have to plow and maintain that road. So, even though it's a, still a town road, it's crystal clear that under the statutes, if it's a Class VI road, then any abutters that elect to use it need to plow and maintain it. It's not something done by the town.
So, you're referring to something like, almost like the condo fee, so to speak, where they'd have to pay?
Oh, yeah, the, the, these two individuals would, there'd be a cross-easement for the access, and part of that cross-easement would require that they both contribute to maintain and plow the road. It's a driveway, essentially.
Well, I actually had a question on one of the diagrams.
Okay, go, sure.
You showed a cul-de-sac going in. Does that, how does that cut into the two acres for each property?
We're not, we're not, we're not, we're not, I mean, we, we gave you a number of plans. As, as we know, this board does not like things admitted after the fact. You've made that quite clear to us. So, we've gone over this, and I'm, I'm trying to keep it pointed, direct, and relevant to the proposal that we're bringing before the board.
Okay.
That's not on the table tonight, to answer your question.
I just was referring to what was submitted.
Yeah, go ahead, you wanna respond, Ken?
Again, Ken Clinton with Meridian. I just wanted to follow up on your point. One of the exhibits that we did provide, item K2, there's a fairly recent document that the town council signed to allow another landowner in town to have a driveway on a Class VI road. And it's called a Notice Agreement and Release of Municipal Liability and Responsibility Pursuant to RSA 674:41, Part 1. And so, that's in the package as an example of a typical document that would be pursued in this case.
Yeah, this is not an unusual situation.
Are we aware of other properties in Merrimack that are in a similar situation?
This is exactly, this is one example directly from Merrimack.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It occurred on South Greater Road within the last two years. The document actually is dated February 27th of 2014, in February of 2014. So, this just did occur. And I have another example that we provided where there was no frontage at all on, off of Wooded Road, and there was a subdivision that occurred on a railroad right-of-way that used a slightly different mechanism for access, but a variance was granted in that case, too. Those are under Exhibit L. And those are just two examples, just for the board's reference.
Now, I, I've got a question. Class VI is unpaved.
It's, it's unpaved, yes. Not all Class VI roads are unpaved, but this, this is, this is unpaved, yes.
I know Back River was dirt when we moved in, so I'm not gonna tell you how long ago it was.
Oh, I've got an idea. Go ahead.
Who is gonna, maybe I missed it, but who is gonna maintain this road? Because it's gonna get awful muddy. It's gonna get, it's gonna be a...
But this, this, when you say road, it's a Class VI road bed. What we're proposing essentially is a driveway between the stone wall that exists on that road. It's essentially gonna be a driveway, approximately 400 feet, which is...
But don't they have to go up Old Road to get into that driveway?
No, they're gonna get...
They're coming in the other way?
They're gonna come right here, Marty Drive, here, and go in.
And so, those two landowners would be entirely responsible for all aspects of that driveway, just like any individual driveway a landowner would. And it's memorialized in a document similar to Exhibit K2 in the, in the packet.
So, you, alright, go ahead, Ken.
Go ahead.
Up to their property, correct?
Right up to the property.
Maintain that road up to their lot.
No, they're gonna maintain it right up to their lots. It's correct. That's absolutely correct. It's similar to a driveway that you would maintain. It just happens to be on a Class VI road bed.
So, the rest of the road is gonna be left pristine?
Rest of the road is, it is, the road is there now. I mean, there is a road there now, as I'm sure most of you are aware.
But it's not gonna be as well taken care of as the driveway.
Probably, in the winter, probably not, at this time. The other thing I would point out, and, and this is, you're, you're asking some interesting questions. Notice the yellow on our plan. When these subdivisions were done abutting this road a while back, a couple of things happened. They dedicated sufficient area to widen the roadbed of Old Blood in this area to a 50-foot standard to make it, so you could bring it up to a Class V standard in accordance with our current regulations. I wanna make that point. Here and here, this was, the right-of-way was widened to allow that improvement should the town, not us, but should the town so elect to do it. We're prepared to do the same thing. You see the yellow. We're prepared to dedicate that area, not to make a town road, but just so that it's available. So, should the town of Merrimack elect to raise this to a Class V standard, which it could do, Town Council has the power to do that, the roadbed would be available to the full 50-foot width for that purpose. We think that's an appropriate and reasonable donation, if you will, to the town to ensure that that could happen if the town wants it to happen.
And I'll add further that we've included in our applications Exhibits D through H, which identify the nature of how the road dedications have occurred through the early to mid 70s and late 70s for the section we're going to be using. It shows that, through proper planning, plans were prepared, subdivision plans were brought before the town and the planning board, showing dedications to allow for a standard 50-foot-wide right-of-way to be dedicated and kept by the town for the upgrade purpose in the future. And so, we're, in this scenario, using it to a much lesser degree than it was intended and planned for, ostensibly for the reason that this is the last undeveloped piece of property on this section of road, and there would be really no substantial need for a through-road for the town. But you can look at the Exhibits, as I said, D through H or G or...
So, if, just out of curiosity, if you plan to build on a Class VI road, does this require approval from the Town Council?
The waiver of municipal liability that I referred to is a Town Council item, yes.
Okay, so is that something that happens after the zoning board, or have you already received that?
If required, it happens after. There's no sense going there if we can't.
Ah, okay.
If we can't do this, then there's no reason for us to, to go there.
That makes sense.
The document that I provided was signed by Finley Rojas, the Chair of the Town Council, back in February 27th of 2014. So, they've seen and they were aware of this type of a document, and they've recently endorsed one, so this would follow suit.
Okay, and that was a Class VI road that a building was placed on?
Yeah, I mean, what, the only thing that makes this interesting is the subdivision part. You see, if that lot, if we wanted a, if we had a lot sitting on this Class VI road, make believe the rest of this wasn't there, this is one big lot. You have the absolute right to petition the Town Council or Board of Selectmen to get a permit to build on your lot if the road is no longer Class V. It's, it's a kind of a funky situation. We don't see too much of it here in Merrimack, but there are other towns throughout the state with quite a number of Class VI roads because a road can fall into Classic Status just by the town not maintaining it for, for five years. It just, don't maintain it, don't plow it. It automatically falls into that status. So, it could be a paved road, and they just don't do anything with it anymore. But if you're one of the unlucky people that happens to have a parcel of land sitting on that road, it puts you at a great disadvantage. It was Class V. You could've built, you didn't. But now you wanna build. Now's the time where you earned enough money to build on it. And there was a procedure under 67441 that's been referenced to allow you to pull a permit to build on that lot. But it doesn't allow you to subdivide the land on the road. That's what we're, you know, that's what we're here about tonight, is to allow us to subdivide it because we believe this is a far superior plan than the plan showing the frontage all from, from Babusak. This makes sense. It's a good plan. The lots are in excess of the lot size needed. makes sense. It's a good plan. The lots are in excess of the lot size needed, the dimensions needed. It is a far better way to deal with what is a good piece of residentially zoned land that's available for possible subdivision. And that's why we're here.
I agree 100% with what you're saying. I think that's a much more logical design. My only concern is, if I didn't get plowed out last year, I'd be in a world of hurt. So that's, that's the only thing I'm thinking of, is another bad winter and...
For 30 years, my driveway was 1,000 feet long, and for 30 years I plowed it, and it worked. You know, you have to deal with things.
Yeah.
That's all I can say. In this instance, it's two houses and about 400 feet. It's not a significant issue as far as we're concerned.
Okay, thank you.
Attorney Michael, just out of curiosity, if I remember correctly, that's a very old farmhouse that's on that property.
It's going to stay there and be there, left there. It's a historic structure, actually.
That's, yeah.
Yes, we're planning to preserve that, and that will be left, that's, we're not, we're not ripping it down. It's going to be one of the lots. It's the elongated lot that I'm showing you on Babusick, this lot right here, 45. There's the farmhouse right there. That's staying.
Thank you. Any more questions? All right, can we go into the points now?
Thank you. The first, of course, the first point that we usually discuss is public interest. Is it contrary to the public interest? This won't be. Does not unduly or to a marked degree violate the basic zoning objectives of the ordinance? The objectives essentially of this frontage are, you know, really to make sure that you've got enough size for septics, that you don't have an undue compression, if you will, or density of homes in any given area. And clearly, in this instance, we are not altering the essential character of the neighborhood with these lots. I would point out that if you look at a tax map, and I believe we've put some, not tax maps, maps of the subdivisions in your file, all of the surrounding lots to this parcel are around an acre in size. They're half what these lots are going to be. There's not going to be any health, safety, or general welfare breached or damaged. We're not going to be threatening any neighborhood homes. We are allowed to use the class six road for access, as I've described. The people that would buy those lots would clearly, I repeat, clearly understand by a recorded document that they are responsible, and in effect, it's their driveway, if you will, until and unless the town votes to improve that to class five status. We're not planning to do that. That's not part of our plan. The access road would be constructed to current standards, the driveway, if you will. It's quite a good road right now. If you've been out there, it is accessible. There's nothing particularly problematic with it, and we don't believe that in any way, shape, or form, this is going to, again, cause a public health, safety, or general welfare concern.
Nothing? Tony?
The next is the, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Tony, I apologize.
Oh, it's okay. The road is going to be the road, but when that people buy the two lots there, is the deed's going to be, oh, I'm sorry. Let's start all over again. The two lots that they're going to buy, well, one guy, say I'm going to buy the, one of the lots.
Yes.
Is the deed going to be, is the road going to be part of the deed?
No.
No.
It's a town road. It just isn't a class five town road.
It's not a class five.
It's just not a class five town road, which means the two people have to repair and maintain it to use it like a driveway. But it's a town road.
All right, I just, I...
No, no. It still remains a town road until when? Discontinued by town meeting vote.
Okay, thank you.
So, no, it's still a town road.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else on that?
So if this were to change, just out of curiosity, if this were to change to a class five road, this is a null and void variance, correct?
We wouldn't need a variance.
Okay.
We would not, we would not need a variance if the status were class five.
Okay, thank you.
All right, number two?
Spirit of the ordinance. Well, again, I've discussed it, but the idea of frontage is to control density, allow for sufficient separation of driveways, provide water and sewer connections if available. And in this instance, you know, the frontage along the class five road ensures adequate access to public roads and utilities, and water is available, as I said, to all of the lots. They would be serviced by septic systems. There is no sewer in that area. The goals of the frontage requirements within the ordinance are clearly not sabotaged by this variance. It's nothing more than a legal, in effect, technicality, class five versus class six. We are going to be using the class six road, but I'm using the term driveway just to give it a perspective, if you will, but in a sense, we're driving up a town road. Problem is, it's not, again, classified class five. So we don't believe the spirit of the ordinance in any way is sabotaged. We have frontage, if you will, on all of these lots that greatly exceeds what's required. Any questions?
Go ahead, sir.
Substantial justice. Is there, what is the gain to the public versus the loss to the applicant? Well, I think there is an apparent gain to the public. I think, as I said at the outset, proper planning sometimes cries for a proper plan, and we certainly believe that this is the more proper plan, right here. This is it. You know, the loss to the applicant is, you know, not being able to do what the applicant feels is proper, fair, and makes sense when you look at this parcel, when you look at the uniqueness of it, look at where the wetlands are, and the fact that we're able to make four very, very generous, well-designed residential lots. So we think the loss to the applicant to do the right thing with the land clearly outweighs any gain, if you will, to the general public by not allowing this particular variance. I would point out that the two lots on the class six road are consistent with residential use. They'll be properly designed, used, and otherwise conform to the ordinance. So we believe strongly that substantial justice will be done by allowing this particular configuration for this property. Thank you.
Questions? Go ahead.
Diminution of value. Again, the lots are all residential. We're in the residential zone. That's really the first test, if you will, of diminution of value. The lots otherwise meet or exceed all zoning dimensional standards. Again, because it's labeled class six versus five, you know, we're here tonight, meeting with you folks. We don't believe that there's anything about this development that would diminish property values. You know, this land can be developed. It's available for development. The owner is entitled to develop it, and we think the proper plan clearly enhances values versus detracting from the area itself. I would point out again that the lots are bigger by double, by double most of the abutting lots in this area. We're also going to, as I said, when we talk about value, we're prepared to give up by easement an area to allow Old Blood to be increased should the town feel it appropriate. And maybe at some point, that will add value to the area itself, but that's not for us to decide tonight, and not something that we're proposing. I'm only pointing out that in this instance, we believe that taken together with the appropriate covenants, with the appropriate work on the class six road, looking at appropriate drainage, we're not going to impact any abutting properties with drainage, and Ken can comment on that, that there'll be absolutely no diminution of property values in this area. Any questions? Hardship. Does a fair and substantial relationship exist between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision of the property because of special conditions and unique circumstances? Well, this property is clearly, clearly, without question, the most unique parcel in the area right now. There's nothing like it. There's no other property that I'm aware of that broach, that goes all the way from Babusick to Old Blood. That's, a part of it has got a large wetland in it, which is one of the reasons we'd like to access from both directions. It makes sense because of the wetland. The configuration of the parcel, the location of the historic house is certainly part of the land at this time. That is a bit of an impediment, but it's not a zoning impediment, but we believe an impediment to efficient use of the property. We think that the parent lot, where it does have access or allowed access off the class six road, which is allowed, it is a public road, and also Babusick Lake Road make it very unique, and it allows us to do something that we feel is appropriate, which is the plan that we're proposing. So this is a unique parcel. It's reasonable to allow this use because, again, at some point, the land will be developed. We believe this is the best way to do it. So we think that our applicant's request is reasonable. It makes sense. It allows the property to be used in accordance with existing zoning. It eliminates any environmental impact to the wetland, any impact to the wetland, and it protects the health, safety, and welfare of the public. Again, I repeat that the people that would buy on the class six road will be fully aware, fully apprised, and fully knowledgeable about what this is about. And quite frankly, that's the developer's problem, not the zoning board's problem. That's it in a nutshell. As I said, this is a rather unique case. It requires a discussion of class six, which I appreciate being able to discuss with the board. It appreciates looking at our secondary plan that we choose not to use. We prefer not to use that. We think this is a much better plan, but it requires zoning board approval because we're not technically on a class five road. Thank you. You want to say one more thing?
You want to show this one?
They've got it in the, one of the members brought that up. It's, I mean, there's, we could also, you know, set up a, go ahead, why don't you discuss it? You'd describe it better than I can.
I just want to...
Go ahead.
Show this one plan briefly again, just so you have a understanding where this shows the desired configuration, seeking relief for these two lots for the definition of frontage on a class six road with a common driveway. This is effectively the subdivision, the maximum subdivision, if you will, of the property if the class six road was to be upgraded to class five road with the full 24 feet of pavement and all the drainage, et cetera, et cetera. So by right, this section of the class six road could be upgraded and improved to class five with a cul-de-sac brought into the middle of the lot, and instead of just the two homes with frontage out here, it could be a new road with four lots around it. And we show potential, just for a sense of scale and position, where four homes could conceivably be placed, just so you have a scale as long as with your driveways coming off that cul-de-sac. Again, the historic house would be left on its own lot in the northeast corner as before, on a slightly smaller lot, still compliant, and then this lot in this location would be, could be built upon as a slightly smaller lot, but still, once again, fully compliant otherwise. So this just shows, instead of a four-lot, fairly simple and straightforward subdivision, it could become a six lot with a new public right-of-way road, town-maintained, et cetera, et cetera. So it just, again, from a planning standpoint, is the effort from a design, approval, construction, cost scenario, is this the right thing to do? Well, our client at this point says no. They'd much, much prefer to have a lesser impact under this arrangement. Do you have any questions on that?
Yeah, so, because, and that's why I brought that up before, Attorney Michael, is that, you know, asking for approval, I understand asking for approval of building on the road.
Correct.
We've had that discussion. But if the board does choose to go forward with this, I mean, at that point, you know, we, does the owner need to come back and ask to do that subdivision?
We, we...
Or can he do whatever, whatever he wants?
We don't need you for this.
Okay.
We do not need you for that, for what you're looking at there.
If...
We go into the planning board. That's a different issue.
Okay.
We don't need you.
Okay.
If you grant us the variance, our plan is to go ahead with our four-lot plan. That will end it there.
That's, okay.
That will end it there. But I'm just telling you, we have a couple of options. I'd be less than candid if I didn't say that.
I appreciate it.
And I've said it, but we just think that this, this is environmentally sound, it's low density, it's only four lots, they're large, it works, it's safe, it makes sense.
Any further questions?
I do for, I believe for Attorney Michael.
Go ahead.
Somewhere in the back of my mind, I ran into this quite a, quite a long time ago. If, in fact, those homes maintain that class six part of the road.
Yes.
And the town does not touch it, and I forget for how long, do not they take over the ownership of that part of that road?
Once a road becomes a town road, class three, four, five, six, I don't care what it is. It's a town road. Let's start there. The only way, the only way that road disappears and then the middle-of-the-road rule takes place, and you own half and I own half, because we abut, requires a town vote. Either town meeting, or Manchester, of course, is the Board of Mayor and Alderman. It requires a town vote to do it. You can, you cannot take any public land by eminent domain by use. By statute, you cannot.
I know, I know.
So the answer is no. They could be out there 100 years, and with the current statutory scheme, it still remains a class six road with them using it. They're using it, but they're maintaining it for access to their properties. No, it will not, it will not disappear. The rule, the five-year rule, is when the town gives up maintaining a class five road, as I mentioned, and if they, for five years, they just abandon the road. It's there. They don't plow it. They don't maintain it. Then by statute, it automatically reverts from class five to class six status. If the town later decides to pick up to plow it and maintain it again, if they do that, it was three years or five years, doesn't matter, it's in the statute, then it reverts back to class five status again.
I know, we had run into something like this way in the early stages of when I came on ZBA. That's why I was questioning it.
Well, I've given you, I've given you the rules as provided by statute, madam chair.
So I do have another...
I take your word for it. That's why I asked of you.
No, that's why I'm happy to discuss it, so we all understand it.
I have a question, and this is only because I'm a little bit confused on this.
I don't want you confused. Go ahead.
Um, do houses that are on, when a property is on a class six road?
Okay.
Is that legally considered frontage?
It depends on what town you're in.
So do we know if that's the case in Merrimack?
No, no, that is, it is not, wait a minute, it's not, it's frontage, but it's not frontage for the purposes of subdividing land. It's town road frontage, but to allow us to subdivide, we need frontage on a class five road.
I see.
But it's frontage on a town road. It is frontage on a town road. It's just that the frontage is not to the, I use the word standard, although it's a pretty good road. It's not to the, it's not being plowed and maintained by the town, thus it doesn't have class five status, and under our zoning ordinance, we are not allowed to subdivide on that without your approval, which is what we're here for tonight.
So...
But you're on it, you're fronting on a town road.
Well, I guess my question is, if we took the class six road out of the picture, we're basically saying that there's going to be zero feet of frontage because it doesn't meet the criteria for frontage on a town road. Am I right or am I wrong?
You could interpret it that way. I'd be less than candid if I said otherwise. I'm telling you, the rule is, you need frontage on a class five road, but we're not on a dirt road. We're not on a tote road. We're on, we happen to be on a class six road.
Okay.
And we may very well, and we've got to go to the selectmen to have them, Town Council, excuse me, to go, you know, to deal with our indemnity agreement and so forth that we discussed, that Ken was kind enough to point out to you folks. This is a, you know, this, this is an unusual situation.
Yeah.
I pointed that out at the beginning. We're not on a, we're not just on a dirt road. We're on a town road, but it just doesn't rise to the status of class five, which is required for subdivision. I don't know what else to say about it.
So what would be the difference if it were not a town road?
But then, then, again, the zoning board could grant it, but you might be more reluctant to grant it because the statutory provisos in 674, 67441... to grant it because the statutory provisos in 674, 67441, you know, it's a different, you got, you know, that statute clearly takes into account building on Class 6 roads. In other words, it provides relief for people who are on Class 6 roads.
Okay.
And you'd look at it, you'd say, is this safe? Does it make sense? Is it, what is it? And here, it is a town road.
Okay.
And I, you know what, and, you know, if that were a dirt road out there, then very likely, we'd be pursuing Plan B or C in our six-lot subdivision or the four-lot all-off Babusak. We probably wouldn't even be here. But we believe that based upon the fact it's Class 6, this is the better way to go. It's that simple.
So when you're saying depending on what town you're in, it's because across the state, it's a gray area?
Some towns allow subdivision on less than Class 5 roads. Zoning is not uniform throughout the state of New Hampshire. You know that.
Correct.
I know that. You go to any town, they will never, ever be identical. I defy anyone to pull out two ordinances from two towns that are identical. I defy anybody to do that. I've been doing zoning work for over 35 years. I have never, ever, off of the state, I've never, ever seen one alike, never. So that's why I have to give you the caveat that you say, you know, what if you're, you know, what about Classics Roads? And sometimes, you can do some things on Classics Roads that you can't do in Merrimack.
Yeah, and that's why I asked, because, you know, looking through it, I've seen it kind of go both ways, so I truly don't know. I'm good, thank you.
The test is the same.
Yes.
The repair maintenance test, the five-year test, those are the same. Those are by statute.
Yes.
But the zoning side of it, toss a coin up, see where the ordinance falls. Ours falls the way it falls. And we respect that.
Just out of curiosity, on the other, on the other plan of the six lots.
Mm-hmm.
And the land, the road that's going into the development.
Mm-hmm.
That would be the responsibility and the cost of the development, the town?
Become a town road, right?
It would be, it would be constructed by the developer, the cost of its construction would be borne by the developer, but once it's accepted by the town, then it would be a full town road, fully maintained by the town.
But the cost of doing it would be up to the developer.
Oh, yes.
Correct.
Absolutely.
The responsibility of the developer.
That is correct.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Wouldn't it be more financially sensible to get the six properties and let the town take care of the road? I mean, I guess, if that's an option on the table, why, why not go that path?
You know, some people aren't in it just for the bucks. I'm going to tell you that.
Okay, I'm just, just curious.
Huh? It's a better, we think it's a better plan for this area, we think it makes sense, which is why we're proposing it. It's that simple. No strings attached. It is what it is, we've shown you the plans.
Any other questions?
I'm good.
You're good? Yeah. All right, since the board has no more questions, I'm going to open up the public hearing. And is there anyone who would like to testify for this petition? Is there anyone who would like to testify against it? And have you been sworn in, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, would you come take a seat and give us your name, please?
Seat, ma'am.
Either one, it's fine.
Just wish you were.
Good evening.
And sign in the log. Your name, sir?
Donald Warner.
Yes, I have it right here.
And I would like to read it for, so it'll be on record.
Do you have a copy of it?
I'm sorry, yes, I do.
Do you have a copy? All right, if you would read it, that'd be fine.
Before I read it, though, I'd like to say that I believe the board has been misled about the status of Old Blood Road and the point of entry from Marty Drive. I would invite all of you and Attorney Michael to come down tomorrow and make sure you have a Jeep with a winch, because you're not going to go 20 feet before you sink into the mud there. There's an incredible amount of water runoff there, a lot of which goes through my property. And I don't, honestly, years ago, I, they probably allowed building on that land, but I think with today's rules, it may have changed, and they may not have allowed some of that building because of the water table there. And I believe this poses a serious threat to that entryway. And the other end of Old Blood Road is wider. At the point from Marty Drive, it's only 12 feet, as was stated in the planning board meeting last Tuesday night. And so I wanted to just make that point very clear, that although it is a Class 6 road, which if you were to ask me a week ago, I wouldn't have been able to give you a definition of it, I can now. And it is clearly not passable by any traffic. It's not plowed, as, as the attorney did mention, because there'd be no point to. Because no one will ever use it, other than recreationally. Kids have used it for years with their four-wheelers and have gotten stuck in the mud. There's a pallet down at the end of the, that road now, that they put there so they could get through it. They've come through my backyard because I have an opening off of Old Blood Road and, you know, had to have come that way because they didn't want to get stuck again. So I know all too well, having lived there over 20 years, about Old Blood Road, and I believe you would, 100% misled as to the status of that road.
We'll, we'll ask.
Pardon me?
We, after, when we go further into this, we'll ask the attorney and see what he says also.
Okay.
And give him a chance to speak on it.
Fair enough. Fair enough. I just wanted to make that point very clear, and I think I speak for anybody else that would oppose, that they would know the same thing. I'll point out, not, not every point, bullet point on my letter applies to this specific meeting, but I think it kind of gives an overall view of what the situation is, at least from my viewpoint. Dear board members, we are writing the board to inform you of our opposition to zoning ordinance to permit a four-lot subdivision with two of the lots having frontage on a Class 6 road. The subdivision is located on map 5B slash Lot 45, located on 190 Babusak, across from Mitchell Street. The proposed access way or driveway for the two lots requiring permission enters from Marty Drive onto Blood Road adjacent to our home on 15 Marty and adjacent on the other side of the entry to 11 Marty. There are several issues that we feel we need to bring to the attention of the zoning board. Point one, to the immediate right of the entry to Blood Road off of Marty is a group of trees that are mostly dead and are in standing water. In fact, one has fallen across the entry to Old Blood Road this winter. And another has snapped halfway up and is also leaning over, creating a safety hazard. This issue was caused by the water table in that area, and in my opinion, in our opinion, will continue. There's an incredible amount of water runoff that comes through our property and settles onto the lower part of Blood Road. I'm uncertain how a developer can stop that from occurring without addressing the issues of excess water flowing through my yacht, my lot. Number three, it is very clear that other neighbors that live on Marty Drive have, have similar water issues that flow from the proposed subdivision area. It is number four, it has already been noted at the February 16th planning board meeting that a resident mentioned the wildlife habitat in the proposed subdivision could be adversely affected, and Old Blood Road could no longer be used recreationally as it is now. The proposed driveway will pass along the right side of our property and then turn left and pass directly behind our lot within a few feet of our backyard, which we strongly oppose. Additionally, this proposed access way or driveway could have a negative economic impact on the future resale of our property. Number six, we would also like to note that the scale of the proposed subdivision plans don't clearly reflect the impact the project will have on our property and others, more specifically 11 Marty Drive and then 15 Marty Drive where I am. And I'm talking about the entrance, and then, and I also had, we respectfully request that the zoning board visit the proposed access way or driveway and see firsthand the negative impact it has on adjacent properties. You'd be amazed how close it is, it doesn't show it that way on the map, but they, 11 and 15 Marty Drive are very, in very close proximity to that driveway. Finally, we would like to note this, the second set of plans, which I've talked about, which talks about the other six lots or the six-lot subdivision. I thought it was going to enter from the other end of Old Blood Road, but apparently, from the drawing I saw tonight, it would enter from Marty Drive and it would go to a cul-de-sac. And, but if they could enter from the other end or through, off of Babusak Lake Road, it would have far less impact on our property and others, and should be explored as a viable And then I had a couple of comments on, on the five points, the criteria. And one, one point would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Yes, it would. And then on point two, the spirit of the ordinance allows for sufficient separations of, separation of houses, driveways, and especially water and sewage provisions. There's not a huge separation between the driveway and my house and 11 Marty Drive, so I disagree with that as well. Number four, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. I feel as though it would, because the driveway is going to literally come along adjacent to my driveway, 30, 40 feet away, and make a 90-degree turn and go directly behind my property. The wall is actually in the back of my backyard, and there's an opening at, at one point that's maybe 30 or 40 feet from the actual backyard. So there's wooded area on parts of it, but for the most part, I'd have a driveway going along and behind me. And it does in point four mention, the public will only see a single driveway, which will appear less substantial than a typical neighborhood. But due to its separation and the lack of visible house and associated uses, my house is extremely visible, and so is that on, on 11 Marty Drive. So my, my request to the board would be to consider other options and to hopefully visit the site yourself to see exactly what I'm talking about, but that stand of trees, which is right at the entrance of Old Blood Road from Marty Drive, is probably maybe 30 square feet or so. It's a foot of water there now, the trees are all dead. That would have to be totally removed, which was not mentioned as a proposed plan. And I would believe that there's going to be some serious, you know, drainage issues there that need to be addressed. That's all I have to say, thank you.
All right, I appreciate you reading this into the record for us. I can comment on one, one of your items. Maybe I'm not supposed to, but I'm going to. We've run into this before in the town. If you have an extinct species of animal or something like that, frog or whatever, or nesting eagles in the, on that property, that would be my.
I'm not, I'm unaware of that. I know we've had deer and bear and moose.
Well, no, that, those aren't, those unfortunately don't, they don't count.
Right, right. We have, we have bats and we have woodpeckers and.
Basically the same I have in my, my area.
Sure.
But if, if there was something extinct or federally protected.
Mm-hmm.
Because I know we, we ran into that down by the Merrimack River that was nesting eagles. So, but again, thank you for reading the letter, and I'm going to let.
Thank you for hearing.
Attorney Michael, you have a rebuttal on that?
First of all, you know, I, I'm sensitive to what the abutter has stated, but with all due respect, he owns a house that abuts a Class 6 town road. That road is there, and right now, right now, my clients as a butters could go in there, repair the road, and what repairs we do will be done in a professional way. We are not going to create a drainage issue for any abutter. We could go in there now, without any zoning, anything, to access the back of that land, repair the road, chop down any trees that have fallen over the road, and use it. I want to make that real clear right now. That is a town road. The fact that they happen to abut it closely, well, that's the way things are. It's no different than building near any road, any town road.
What about the, what about, what about coming in from Babusak as opposed to coming in from Marty? Why isn't that?
I'd like, Kenny, Ken can probably comment better than I can. I don't mean to dodge, dodge the bullet, but go ahead.
It looks like it's a shorter path.
Actually, what you see on this plan, you'll see some tie zigzags, if you will, that's just to show the relative configuration, that it does connect to Babusak Lake Road. It's informative only for you. However, it's another, several hundred feet away from that standpoint. More so than anything, to access with a common driveway off of Marty Drive is infinitely more safe for everybody than having another access point off of Babusak Lake Road. If you recall, the Babusak Lake Road curves around this property to the northeast, and as you come through that curve, then you have the intersection with Bean Road, and it's less safe to then have a common driveway opposite Bean Road and make it a four-way intersection on Babusak Lake Road than to have a common driveway and off of Marty Drive, far more safe. I've walked that entire section myself. My company, not only are we land surveyors and civil engineers, we're wetland scientists, soil scientists, septic designers. We complete the full realm of consulting for development. I don't think that's an appropriate location as compared to Marty Drive. Marty Drive, hands down, the better location.
Are we going to create a drainage issue by going in and doing our, you know, upgrades, what upgrades we're going to need for the driveway?
No, as a matter of fact, if we pursued the full road design, it would be far more impacting, and we would impact the wetlands in that entrance of Marty Drive. Mr. Warner is right, there is a small pocket of wetlands down there. We delineated and located it, 850 square feet of wetlands. The driveway does not impact that wetland. A road certainly would. And due to the nature of this intersection and how it was planned in the 70s, if you recall, I noted back in '73, the first section of Marty Drive was done, in '78, the second section was done. That's when Mr. Warner's lot was created, in 1978. His plan that I have included in the package as Exhibit G1 shows his lot is substantially wet. He bought a piece of property, nearly three acres, but it's substantially wet, has runoff coming down right towards his house and intersects Marty Drive. Some of that runoff does then head east towards Old Blood Road. However, both the 1973 design plan and the '78 plan knew there was drainage to collect there. Culverts were installed as part of that process. And so there's a 24-inch culvert that runs across Marty Drive that's perfectly located and suited to use as part of our design. And when we do design, whether it's a road or a driveway, DPW is involved, because they don't want excess or runoff from a driveway or a road. Entering a public road creates unsafe situations, especially if it's in the winter and runoff comes onto the road and creates some ice. We have to pass all of the DPW requirements for either a road or, or new driveway connection. The drainage system is already in place for this driveway in particular, to handle it without impact.
So are you saying, let's just get the long and the short of it here, are you saying that in putting in that driveway and repairing it, because I've been down there and I, quite frankly, I have a four-wheel drive and I wasn't about to go down that road, but if, you're, you're saying is that, that if you put that driveway in there, you're actually going to make that improvement as far as drain, runoff, so he'll have less runoff coming into his yard, there'll be less runoff on Marty?
Majority of the runoff into Mr. Warner's yard, I've looked at, I've been on the property, not on, walked on his land, but I've walked and viewed, because I need to know what's on the opposite side of Old Blood Road as we consider what we want to do on the property, the applicant's side of the road. The runoff that comes through his property is predominantly, almost exclusively, not associated with Old Blood Road itself. It's runoff that comes through his own property closer, it originates at Babusak Lake Road and then comes through. The plan that, that created his lot, which is in your package, clearly shows that.
Okay, so, but just for his clarification and for mine, in putting the road in there, you said the draining is, the drainage is already in place, is that going to create runoff? Or is that going to create excess runoff? Or is that actually going to improve where those trees are? Because I saw where those trees are, I saw the tree down. Is that going to improve upon them?
It'll actually improve it. And let's not forget that while there is a quote-unquote "roadbed" there, an ancient one that was created, I don't know, hundreds of years ago, whatever the case may be, we don't just put pavement down and call it a driveway. We have to take a look at the soils that are there. We have to take a look at the soils that are there. The, the town has requirements for driveways and soil base and depth and quality, so that as you connect to a town road, you don't harm the town road. So in this case, if there's one or two feet of material that is less suitable for subbase for a driveway, and we go in there, and there's a 12-inch culvert that does cross Old Blood Road now, the gravel, out of that 850-foot square wetland into the larger 24-inch culvert, that 12-inch, well, the town, DPW generally likes 15. So it's fairly reasonable to think that in a driveway construction, we'll take out one or two feet of soil, replace the 12-inch that's existing there, put a 15 in, which is what's desired by the town DPW, and then we'll have enough road base and, and upgraded fixed drainage to then have a driveway, which would be paved, obviously, and then there certainly wouldn't be any access issues. I, I see no access issues whatsoever, and only an improvement for the drainage.
Where is that culvert located?
Excuse me. Once again, Marty Drive was designed in two phases, if you would like to call them that, in the early 70s and the later 70s. The early 70s had a cul-de-sac here. That's why this right-of-way is bulbous, if you will, as it intersects Old Blood Road, which runs north-south. Marty Drive comes in from the east. There used to be a fully paved cul-de-sac here prior to the next phase of Marty Drive being extended. In that process, there's not only a 12-inch culvert that runs across Old Blood Road, the gravel bed, there's also a 24-inch culvert that runs from the north side of Marty Drive to the south side of Marty Drive. And so that's the most substantial culvert that removes drainage that largely comes down through Mr. Warner's property, and then along down the roadbed, enters into this culvert, and then exits south. That's all pre-designed, existing, and ready to be used for especially this driveway. If we were to do a road design, 24-foot paved, full road, all of the other features that modern roads would have, we certainly would look to use this 24-inch culvert, but quite frankly, it may need to be upgraded for the road design. But once again, we wouldn't be here if we were pursuing the road subdivision, because we wouldn't need relief for that particular approach.
I'm just wondering if the culvert was made bigger, or had a different angle on it. Would that help them?
Well, in this case, I think the majority of Mr. Warner's drainage issues is on his private property, not related to Old Blood Road in its current form, and we would only improve the situation because we would be required to through the, not, don't forget, we would also have to go to the planning board for this issue, for a subdivision. So any loose ends that weren't fully understood here for the abutter standpoint, we would be going to the planning board. We would also, in the process, obviously, be further speaking with DPW. We did mention this with Kyle Fox, just to have him aware of what we were considering, but we didn't have plans at that time, design plans, to, to share with him. But that would all be part of the planning board process. We're merely looking to have frontage for subdivision purposes allowed on a Class VI road. And all of these issues, my professional opinion, in my business, and what we do for design and permitting, this is absolutely very simple to design and permit. And it would be, in, in fact, a benefit to the, to the two neighbors, because even if it's simplest form, fixing and increasing the size of this 12-inch culvert to then enter, all that drainage would then enter the 24-inch culvert that crosses Marty Drive, that would be an improvement in itself, just from a driveway standpoint.
No, I'm trying to reach a happy medium here. All right. Do you have anything further, Attorney Michael?
Not at the moment. Thank you, Madam. Sure.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to testify against this petition? All right. Would you step up? Have you been sworn in?
Raise your hand. Do you sort of tell the truth, the whole truth, so you got?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
And if you would just sign in, please.
I'm not sure that I'm going against or for this, but I guess I'm confused. If this is a public road, and you put a driveway on it, does that mean I can't walk on it?
No.
No, it should be. Okay, so it still retains its public road status. That's all. I just wanted to be clear about that, because people do use that road as a recreational road.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe I'm not, maybe this is the appropriate place to ask that, but...
Yeah, for, as Attorney Michael pointed out, it is a, it is a public road, and it remains a public road. It, it's not going to become a private road, but because of the classification of the road, it would be, if, if it's approved, the people who are in those homes would be responsible for maintaining the snow removal of that road so they could get out. But you, you know, you could still walk up, and they can't, they can't prevent you from walking through. No. It's, it's a town road that their driveway is going to share.
As long as it's a public road and not a private road that's posted, you should be able to walk it.
Okay. That's it. Thank you. I'm sorry?
Could you just sit down and give your name and address?
Oh, say my name and address. I'm Janice Tibbets, and I live at 1 Marty Drive.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Last call. Anyone else who wants to speak for or against at this point? Come forward.
I'm Leon. Actually, I live at 1 Marty Drive. It basically is a bike trail. It's not a road. I know they call it a road, but... And also, there's a lot of wetland. I'm on 1 Marty. It's all well and behind us. I've had water issues in my cellar, and they've gotten worse since they put the new school. So that's changed something in the water structure in the neighborhood since they did that. So I'm wondering how that's going to affect me when they start changing the soil and the structure behind my house again. You know, so they say it's not going to, there's, there's a whole bunch of weather over here, right behind the old house. It's all wet, running in between me and the house next to me. And if they start moving soil around and putting houses in there, that's going to change water flow again. And I'm cutaways from the new school, and my, I've had issues with more water since that new school's gone. So somehow it's changed the flow from getting, from our property to out to where it used to go, up to where the old beaver ponds used to be, which they took one out when they did some more building up on the other end of Marty Drive.
Yeah, they took those out completely, yeah.
You're not really that close to the school, so I'm surprised how you're impacted.
Since they put that school in, I've had more issues with water. And I never had until that school went in. So I, that's the only two things I can equate to the change. And now I've got way in behind me that's wet, that people are going to start messing with. How's it going to affect me? That's all I'm worried about. Again, that road they're talking about, if you've gone up there, it's basically a bike trail. It's not a road. You can call it a road all you want, but it's a trail. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Just a question for, I'm sorry, I'm bad on names. Ken, how you doing, Ken? On this construction that you're going to go to the front of the planning board, it is your, is your contention to better, how would I put it? Better maintenance of the road and the culvert? As, as I can see it now, I'm looking at the road, that culvert isn't working.
The 12, the 12-inch culvert does not appear to be working as well as it could. Maybe it was fine when it was put in, I don't know. However, that's the culvert that I would expect we would be replacing with a 15-inch culvert, because that's the desired size. And we would make sure that was set at an elevation that properly handled the drainage for Old Blood, the driveway portion that we're doing. I'm not sure that I can fully handle and remediate any of Mr. Warner's drainage issues for the wetlands that come through his property.
Well, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that you'd be some kind of an improvement on the road.
Yes. And that has to be reviewed by the town's consulting engineers as well, Tony.
Okay. Thank you.
And if I could, I'd like to just briefly, Mr. Luska, he owns this corner property here, and so rightfully so. He was discussing his wetlands that come through the property. The wetlands actually, once again, originate more so near or across Babusick Lake Road. They come through this property, the chief's property, forgive me, I don't know how to pronounce the last name. And then you can see, as Greg Michael suggested, there's a wetland that bisects this property. The east portion where the old home is, in the front of John Babusick Lake Road, this wetland allows drainage runoff from the north through the property, through the section, and it does enter properties down here. That was a natural drainage pattern that existed prior to any of these homes being developed. We will not be impacting that one bit. Part of the beauty of what we're seeking now is avoids any wetlands impact here, avoids any crossings or driveways, culverts, or what have you to get across this wetland. That's, that's why, in large part, we're seeking this variance here. As soon as these lots are developed in this fashion, this configuration, yes, there will be a house that's placed here on lot, what we call 45-1. Not why we're here tonight, but this is the lot. Predominant theory when we are doing design, we cannot increase the rate, the, the amount of runoff that comes through at any given period of time, or the quantity as it leaves our site. So whatever drainage issues that Mr. Luska has that may or may not originate on this property, we will not increase. We will not harm. In fact, it's more likely that whatever we do on this property will reduce the amount of runoff that leaves that property and goes on to his. So it's, it has more likelihood to, to reduce it, that we just simply cannot increase it. That's not allowed by the regulations. So...
Thank you.
And then I believe, one other comment I was going to make, if I could. Mr. Tibbets noted that, you know, would the driveway be available for public use in one of the exhibits K2 that I provided you? It was the example of the waiver municipal liability that the town council signed just last year. In its item number I, or letter I, it reads, "The entirety of South Greater Road," in this case would be Old Blood Road, "including the designated portion shall remain a public right-of-way for current and future use by the public." And this would, this document would be somewhat corollary or mimicked in, in this agreement as well.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
I don't think the question of the stand of trees has been addressed. You said that you...
Excuse me. You've got to address us.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I don't think the stand of trees that I mentioned at the entry of Old Blood Road has been addressed. They're saying they're going to put in a culvert, and they're going to address the drainage. But those trees still propose a hazard. They're all dead. And as I stated earlier, a couple of them have snapped over the years, and this year in particular, two of them.
If they're going to, if they're going to make that road or driveway usable, I'm just going to imagine they're, they're going to have to address that. They're going to have to remove them. They're going to have to take care of that, because you can't, you can't expect to put in any type of a driveway to move in, let alone equipment, but let alone cars or residential. You're not, you're not going to, you, you have to take, they have to, that has to be addressed. There, there's no way that you can really do it without that. I'm just speculating is, I mean, I was down there. I saw that. You'd have to do that unless you had people with large Jeeps to get down there.
That'll, that'll probably come up at the planning board.
Yeah.
Sure.
Because if, if...
And my other comment would, you know, you, the attorney Michael, or I believe the other gentleman may have said, the, the water came through, Ken. The water came through my property, but it's still going to come through, and it's still going to end up on Old Blood Road. And if they raise that, which they'd have to do in order to put a driveway in, it's, where's that water going to go? It's going to tip back to me, or is it going to tip to 11 Marty Drive and create more of a problem than I already have? That, that would be my other question. Thank you.
We, we cannot design this to increase flow or quantity onto abutting landowners. We have to culvert up, properly design it, to take care of the runoff so that does not occur. It's that simple. The planning, those are the planning regulations. The planning board is pretty stiff on that. I think you're all aware of that. It would have to be reviewed by their own consulting engineers. Any work that we do will not be increasing flow or rate onto abutting properties. And point of fact, as kind of stated, very likely, quite a bit of what we might do may help a bit. We can't, you know, I'm not promising that, but we think it would actually help a bit. But we can't increase or change what's existing out there. The trees will have to be dealt with as part of our driveway permit and rebuilding. We understand that those are there as well.
I think it's important for everyone who's here to, to bring out, and, 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 correct me if I'm wrong on this, but the reason that Attorney Michael and Ken are here tonight is to seek variance to have those two properties on Old Blood Road because of the classification of the road. They're looking to get a variance under the town ordinance to have those there, which we understand that. Things like drainage, there are, as Attorney Michael and Ken have pointed out, there are laws and regulations as far as where, you know, flow, wetlands, all of that. This isn't the last stop for this. If this, if this is approved, this then has to go to planning board, and planning board has civil engineering consultants, and has the ability to have civil engineering consultants take a closer look at this for further evaluation, and make sure that the plans from, as far as drainage, build, the road itself, all of that is taken care of. Only thing that's, that we're discussing tonight is whether or not it's okay for them to, to do, to do what they want to do. That's what they're coming, they're asking for permission to do that, and that's what we're looking at right now. A lot of the, a lot of good questions, a lot of concerns, a lot of that will be, has to be addressed, not will, has to be addressed to the planning board, and the planning board has to have that in a satisfactory manner in order for them to move forward with this. So, you know, if, like I said, if it goes through tonight, this is, this is, believe me, this is not their last stop. They are going back to planning board at least one or two times to make sure that the plans are approved, to make sure that everything is taken care of, from drainage to wetlands, to the trees, to the road itself, the condition of the road, to final approval of the, the plot and all of that. So I just want to make sure everyone's, is aware and clear of it. This is just the, this is their first step of multiple stops that they're going to have in front of boards at Merrimack regarding this, so.
Thank you.
Yes. Go ahead.
Just a, a point I'd like to figure out here. If I'm reading your plans properly, the traveled way, the paved traveled way of Marty Drive at the rounding of the old cul-de-sac is technically on somebody's private property, not in the town right-of-way.
I would agree.
And it appears to me that whoever did this put the road over there so they didn't have to deal with the wet hole, which is the town's problem, because it's a town road now.
I may not agree.
But I am reading the plan properly.
You are.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. No, come up to the mic, please. And just state your name again for this.
11 Marty Drive. I just don't know if it's going to affect anything, but when I'm far, my property, I was deeded 10 feet from... I was deeded 10 feet beyond my, my back wall into that property. And I don't know how many other people got that added on. And I don't know if that's going to affect anything with their size or shape of their lots, so just want to make people aware of that.
That would be the right-of-way, wouldn't it, Julian?
I have a deed shown, 10 feet deeded back to my property beyond my stone wall in the back property facing that old house. I have a deed showing it, so...
Something that we would have to sort out at the planning board level.
The planning board requires us to provide appropriate survey data. As a practical matter, if there were a 10-foot strip where he is... As a practical matter, if there were a 10-foot strip where he is, it wouldn't impact us to any great degree. The lot would still be a sufficient size, it would still have frontage and those types of things.
All right, any further questions from the board before I go back to the public hearing? Thank you. All right, the public hearing is still open. Is there anyone else who would like to testify before I close it? Yes, ma'am? Would you sign in on the sheet also, and then state your name and address?
You can have the seat.
You can have the seat.
My name is Nancy Warner, and I'm from 15 Marty Drive, and I just wanted to express my opposition of utilizing Marty Drive as an access, and not only just for the reasons that have already been spoken of, but it, I don't feel as though that map depicts clearly how it would impact our property, and I, and the stone walls, because if they are to widen it to accommodate vehicles, and would that be wide enough to accommodate one vehicle or two vehicles passing, because there would be two homes off of that road, that means that the stone walls would have to be moved. So that would impact us as well, because right along our property line is one of the stone walls, as well as number 11. So there's more to it than just the fallen trees, and there's more to it than making sure that the new homes have plenty of frontage and privacy. All of our privacy will be gone. So we've lived there for 23 years, we've enjoyed our yard, our children have, and our neighbors, you know, they mentioned recreational use of Old Blood Road, and it's true, and I'm glad to hear that if it does happen, we would still be able to do that. But I've always, you know, imagined that when we perhaps downsize, we could sell that, you know, home to another young couple and young family that could enjoy it the way that we have, and with them proposing to enter at that end of Marty Drive, which is the narrowest, I, it just seems to me as though it would be, it's the least desirable of entering, you know, that development. But, and I just wanted to express that, I'm very, very upset, as you can see.
I completely understand where you're going, where you're coming from with this, and since, you know, this would inevitably go through a planning board, I definitely recommend that you bring it up then at that point, too. The thing that we have to look at is, they've shown us three maps, if we say no to this, they still can build on the other two, so we're not stopping them from building, they're going to build.
I do understand that.
So that's kind of the, that's kind of the, the kind of, you know?
And I'm not as opposed to the building itself as I am to them using that end of Marty Drive as the access, and not simply because, you know, it's, you know, crosses behind my yard, but it just seems as though it's the least desirable for everybody. You've only got, at the other end, it's wider, number one, it's drier, number two, and there is, there is a home up at that end, but it's only on one side, and it also has, if I'm not mistaken, because I did drive by it, but it appears as though there's a wider area of woodland, so that, and it goes alongside it versus alongside and then behind, as it does on our home. So I'm not trying to, I don't want to sound like I'm trying to pass my problem on to them, but, you know, that might be a more feasible way, but I actually like the idea of all of the homes being accessed by Babuuksek, although I do understand that there is that bend in the road. But at least it would only impact those new homes versus homes that are, have already been in existence for many, many, many years. So.
No, it's a good point, it really is.
I thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to make a quick response to Mrs. Warner's comments. We did evaluate the full length of Old Blood Road, both from Babuuksek Lake Road access to the north. As I mentioned, it's less safe from a vehicular standpoint, however, we could still consider doing that if during the planning process and the design process, that we were directed to do so, or revisit it in some fashion. Either way, whether we came from the north from Babuuksek Lake Road or from the south Marty Drive, the request before you and your board tonight is one of the same.
It's true. It's true. They may, they could direct us there, who knows?
Yeah.
We're still in the same boat, but.
And again, you know, whichever way we vote, you still have the right to build, so it's kind of a, you know, do we, do we let you have the plan that makes sense to you, or do you go with a different plan? Either way, you still get to build, and if it's a road, I'm quite certain that the town, from a health and safety and welfare standpoint, will be from Marty Drive, not Babuuksek Lake Road, if it's a new road. That I disagree with. I think that, I'm just, I've been on my, watching, going through Google Maps, I've been following Babuuksek Lake Road, and I've been on that, I've driven that road. There are many roads that are right around corners that are right across from each other. There, I don't see why it couldn't be out of being, but you know what? At the end of the day, that's not my, that's not my call, it's not why we're here, that's a planning thing, and that's something that, like I said, this is your first of many stops. But I respectfully disagree with the fact that it couldn't be across from being, but again, that's a planning thing, and I'm not, you know, that's all I'll say on that, so. But I understand what you're saying.
Do you have anything further to say?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
I just have one question, and it's bothering me, is there a law in the state that the stone walls, the real antique stone walls cannot be demolished?
On scenic roads, this is not a scenic road.
A scenic road, you'd need planning board permission to impact.
Our plan is to retain as much as possible the stone walls and put our driveway between the stone walls. There may be a couple of places where we may have to relocate the stones.
And we've already committed to doing that. If the DPW deems that a wider area is necessary, then we have already committed that we would relocate that section of the stone wall.
Our plan is to try and preserve the look as it is now. If the town wants to come in and make a Class 5 out of it, blow through it, that's not our issue.
Right.
Okay, just want to make that clear. So we're trying to preserve what's there and keep it consistent with what, I suppose, the existing roadbed such as it is, is. Thank you.
I appreciate that, thank you. All right, and I'm going to close the public hearing as long as there's no one else. Oh, there is someone else. If you would sign in and state your name and address, please.
So hi, my name's Dave Pauley, so I live at 9 Marty Drive, and we're concerned about the runoff. We have had quite a bit of water issues in our basement and back of our yard, so it's definitely something that would be, once that road is developed more, recently we've had our backyard regraded, we've even built a garage fairly close back to the end of our property, and when they were digging, it was literally just so much water, we actually had to relocate our garage, so there's definitely a lot of water that we're concerned about as far as making things worse. We've had water in our basement, water in my new garage, so that's a fairly major concern.
Now, did you build the house, or did you buy it already built?
No, we bought it already built.
And you weren't advised of the water problem at that time?
Uh, not, not really, no. We built the garage, and then when they started digging, it was just water and, you know, just kept flooding, so we actually had to position it back kind of behind our house. And our property's at kind of a lower level than where the road would kind of go through, so we would be concerned if, once they start developing and, you know, making that road more accessible, then, you know, where's that water gonna go?
All right. Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Warner?
Thank you.
Hope I haven't been too much of a pain. I did want to say that when we bought our home, we bought the lot, we asked the builder at the time, my wife noticed some ripples in the site plan, and she said, "Is that water?" And we were told, "No." So had we known that there was that water existed, and, you know, I'm not an engineer, I certainly wouldn't have known that, but we asked that question, and we were not told the truth. So I probably would have rethought, you know, buying that lot.
I agree with you wholeheartedly on that, you should have been told about the water there. All right, thank you.
Don't worry about the time, or don't worry about asking questions, that's what we're here for. We're here to listen to you people, and then we find, we're here to make a decision. So if anybody else wants to say anything, go right ahead. That's what we're here for.
So it's last call, anybody else want to speak? All right, the public hearing is closed. Any remarks from the board?
I guess I just want to stress that this is not the last stop. I mean, whichever way the board decides to go, this is, for the people who are here, there is, this is, believe me, this is far from the last stop. We're just looking at whether or not that they can actually build on that road. Drainage issues, all of that, the stuff that the planning board has to address, it is, they can't increase the amount of water going onto your property, they have to make those, they have to make those accommodations by law. And if they don't, then they're in violation of that, so. I don't, my opinion on it is more planning board than it is zoning board, you know, just from the location of the entrance, but that's, I already made that apparent, so.
And I encourage you to show up at the planning board meeting, and, you know, have all your concerns addressed at that point, but right now, this is as far as we go. I hope you understand that, we just can't go any further now. We have to make a decision tonight.
Also, you know, for the comfort of those who are here, while we've been having this hearing, I've been looking at meeting minutes from other zoning boards and how they voted, and, you know, Attorney Michael says it's a flip of a coin, he's not kidding, that these cases typically go either way, but I will say this, in the cases where they were denied, there were very explicit reasons as to why they were denied, not related to the actual Class 6 road, and in this case, that's really the only thing we're looking at, is the Class 6 road. So I'm personally comfortable with this plan, considering that something will be built. I think this is a sound plan. And again, to reiterate, if they wanted to, they could slice it right across, so everyone who's on Marty Road who borders them to this, has that border to the north, they could slice it right across, and they could still build there. And so, in doing that, they don't need to go to the planning board. They can just, they can just build that, and so. That, and they don't have to address any of the runoff issues on Blood Road, so they could say, "We're gonna build on the front side of the property against Babuuksek and don't really care about Blood Road." So in all honesty, the people that are living closest to Blood Road, I think benefit from this type of a design, because then they're forced to actually look at it, and the planning board has to hear out how they're gonna reconstruct this road to use, as opposed to one of the earlier plans where they can just forget about it, and the drainage issues could potentially get worse. At least that's what it appears from the maps we've been shown.
Because technically, you could have four, five, six driveways coming out of there if they slice it right across.
On Babuuksek, and they have the frontage to do it, by Merrimack Town Ordinances, they have the frontage to do it. So, if it goes this way, then you have more of a voice as to what your community's gonna look like. It may not be exactly what you want to hear tonight, but that's, you know, if it goes to the planning board, you have more of a voice. Otherwise, they slice it up, and they can build, they can still build there, and they don't need the planning board or your voice at all.
Just to clarify, no matter which way they subdivide, they'll still be going to the planning board.
Okay.
Any other comments? All right, could I hear a motion, please?
I'll make the motion to grant Meridian Land Services and Northview Homes and Development variance under Section 1.03A, 25 of the zoning ordinance to permit a four-lot subdivision with two lots, two of the lots having frontage on a Class 6 road, the parcels located at 190 Babuuksek Lake Road in the R3 Residential District, Tax Map 5B, Lot 045, Case 2016-09. The only recommendations here from staff are that the applicant shall obtain subdivision approval from the planning board for the proposed two-lot subdivision, or four-lot subdivision.
Four.
Okay.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by any? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? 5-0-0.
And as always, there is a 30-day-
It's gonna be a lot more than that.
30-day appeal window.
Much longer.
It's gonna go a lot of places.
All right, any discussion of possible actions regarding either other items of concern? Jillian, do you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Nothing?
No.
Do we-
It's only, it's only 10 after 10.
Yeah, we still got 20 minutes.
Do you have anything?
Do we even know why the OEP meeting was pushed out?
What was that?
The OEP meeting, the thing Tim Thompson sent out about the OEP meeting?
Oh, they haven't rescheduled. They said they're going to reschedule, but as far as I know, there's not a date.
But do you know why they canceled?
I don't.
I think that was your question, right?
Meeting approval minutes, so.
No.
Second.
Does anybody have any other questions or concerns, reference the board?
I do have a question. You know, I don't even have to ask it, I'm pretty sure at least two of you know what I'm gonna ask. Did we know if we were gonna have an absentee on the board?
Yes, we did.
We did know that in advance?
Yep.
Yeah, well, at the beginning of the meeting, because she was not listed as one on the chief's.
Yeah, I let Fran know that it's a possibility she would be.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. No further questions, Your Honor? Your Honor, seriously.
All right, could, any corrections for typos on the minutes of the meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, the meeting is as written.
Accepted.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded. All favor? Aye. Return.[1764.88]
Return.
Absent.